Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 3, Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. I have the honor this morning of asking Reverend Wayne Berry if he'd come forward and lead us in an invocation. Reverend Berry, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Woodward. Let us pray. In the silence of this morning, O God, we are alive to the new day's light, alert to the first sounds of creatures. In the silence of our hearts, we hear the yearnings that are in us and the fears, the hopes that rise from within, and the doubts that trouble our souls. In the beginnings of this day, before the night's stillness is lost to the day's busyness, open to us, please, the treasure of our inner being, that in the midst of this day's busyness, we may draw on wisdom. Assure us again of our origins in You. Assure us again that our true depths are of You. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Berry. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize a few folks that are with us this morning. We have with us Ron Payne, who's the vice chair of the Dare County Board of Education. We have the former vice chair of Dare County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Wiley Overman's here this morning. And we also have the latest recipient of the Longleaf Pen, Ms. Tess Judge, was here Well deserved, Tess. County manager.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. I've started something new, as y'all probably recognize. Humor is the last, is the best medicine, I think. So this morning, I'm gonna start out, once again, with a little humor. Seems as though there was an 82-year-old woman who was asked by a 93-year-old gentleman to have dinner with her. So she accepted, they went to dinner. The next morning, the 82-year-old woman's daughter asked her, said, "Well, Mom, had dinner go last night?" She said, "Well, I had to slap him three times." And she said, "Oh, my God, did he get fresh with you?" She said, "No, I just wanted to make sure he was alive." The board, full board, on January 15, 16, 17, traveled to New Bern for commissioner training and ethics training. And all of us, along with county manager, really had a great three days of getting to know one another, since we have three new board members, and really gelling. And I can't thank my fellow commissioners enough for the time that they spent and the efforts that they put into this session to get to know one another and to build on our teamwork. So thank you, commissioners. I appreciate all of your support in attending that. Vice Chair House and myself met with Mr. Alexander on January 20 with respect to, once again, potentially purchasing his property in Wanchies. And I will go into more detail. That's on the agenda at item six, and I'll go into more detail when we get to item six. Recently, just Thursday of last week, Mary Ellen Balance, our new commissioner from Hatters Island, who at the time was a Board of Education member, myself and Chairman David Twitty spoke at the state Board of Elections, I mean Board of Education meeting back in Greensboro several months ago. And it was, we talked about our five-on-five successes and how it worked. And it was so successful that New Bern Board of Commissioners and Board of Education invited us to give that presentation to them. And we did that last Thursday at New Bern, and it was, Excuse me. It was great success, great turnout. So we were happy to do that, and we're looking, we're looking forward to share, sharing our five-on-five successes with any of the other counties throughout the state. And I'm hoping we get some more invites there. We're also looking at perhaps doing a session at NACO, County Commissioners Annual Meeting. Saturday, January 18, I was, first time I've missed this in quite a few years, with the Martin Luther King Celebration here at Tillot Center. Once again, was another success this year in Dare County. And I commend the Lewis family for continuing to stay behind that and offer that annually in Dare County. And then, of course, last but not least, I've got a photo I'd like to share with you, if we can get it up on the screen. Back in September of 2024, the board adopted a resolution and a sign, as you can see right there at the Arts Center where the Veterans Memorial is, that Roanoke Island has an active duty and veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. And it was our pleasure, back in September, to respect all of these men and women who have successfully served their country in the United States Armed Forces. And we were, we proclaimed this as a Purple Heart Island. So we had a sign made and put at the veterans' site here in Manio in appreciation for those sacrifices that the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to recognize their valor, and to show them the honor and support that they have certainly earned. So if you have an opportunity in your downtown Manio, please stop in and see that piece of work that we've put out there for our veterans. So once again, thank you to our veterans, for all that they've done for our country and our community. County manager, that completes my opening remarks.
And that brings us to item two on the agenda, and this is when we present our service pins to recognize our employees for their service to the county. This year, we have 85 years of service represented among three individuals. So we've got three long-term county employees that we would like to recognize this morning. First is Gary Meeks. He'll be receiving his 20, 25-year pin from Shawn Barrera.
Welcome this morning, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us, sir. Chairman, this is Gary Meeks. Been with Dare County Detention Center for 25 years. A pleasure to work with. He's in, he's one of the few that are in transportation. He's responsible for transporting inmates to and from court, picking them up at other, other county facilities, taking them to prison or whatnot. He's always on the road, puts a lot of time in, and it's a pleasure to have him. Congratulations.
Shawn, if you'll stay right there. Next is Eugene Grissom. He'll be receiving his 30-year pin from Shawn Barrera.
This is Eugene Grissom. I met Eugene back in 2001, I believe. I was in basic school, and he was one of the instructors. And I've had the pleasure the last three, three and a half years of working with him at the jail. Great guy, just like Gary, he's on the transportation team. He also does classification, a whole lot of other things, but it's an honor to work with him. And I hate to see him go, but he tells me he's retiring in March, so. But he's put his time in, and I appreciate him.
Next, if Willa Spencer would come forward and receive her 30-year pin.
Good morning, Chairman Woodard, commissioners. This is Willa Spencer, if you don't know already. This is a very proud moment for me to be able to present you with your 30-year pin. Wasn't sure Willa was gonna make it here. About four years, 11 months ago, she was promoted to Income Maintenance Administrator at Social Services. It's been a long road. There's been times when it's been struggling, and there's been times when there's been crying, and there's times when there's been frustration, and then there's been times when there's been a lot of joy. She's taken a unit that was in a state of crisis and built it into a unit that has met or exceeded all of the state's standards. We've slowly continued to recruit our staff and slowly rebuilt our staff. If you don't know, Economic Services and Social Services is responsible for all of Medicaid, Food Nutrition Services, and WorkFirst. We've been through COVID. Willa brought us out of COVID. She brought us through Medicaid expansion and also through Medicaid Managed Care. Through all of that, she's brought us through all the Medicaid audits. She and her unit are subject to five audits a year and brought us through that without any corrective action over the last four years. So very proud of her for that. She's, as I said, slowly rebuilt her team. Not only does she have those units, but she also has a team that does quality control, a training unit, and then a troubleshooter. And many of those staff are here today. She's dedicated, she's a hard worker. Willa is a true career employee of Dare County. She started off as an office assistant and worked her way up through Income Maintenance I, Income Maintenance II, Income Maintenance III supervisor, and then into her current position. She looks to recruit people who want to make social services in Dare County employment a career. And I'm very proud of her for what she's done, and I, although I wish she would stick around another five years, right now, I'm good for a year, a year at a time. So Willa, congratulations.
And my mom is here, so I want to just acknowledge my mother, because without her, I wouldn't be here.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we'll do our Employee of the Month. It's always nice, when I get up here, to do the Employee of the Month, because that means that one of our department heads is our Employee of the Month. As we talked about when we were recognizing our Employees of the Month for the year in our breakfast earlier this morning, the Employees of the Month are chosen by their peers, are chosen by the other department heads, by the staff that they work with and the people that they deal with each day in the county. And so when they get selected, it shows that, you know, they're admired, and the people in the workforce that they work with recognize their talents, recognize the things that they do, and recognize what they do to make Dare County better. Today, we're gonna recognize someone that won't need much introduction, because as a department head, you deal with them every day. We just had people with 30-year careers that came up and talked to you. The Employee of the Month this time is somebody who's had a pretty short career, coming to the workforce in 2021, and has worked her way up through a number of jobs, and started out as the floater, and in a short three or four years, has worked her way up to the clerk. So Skylar, if you would come down and join the place.
I was so confused. Yeah, y'all really lied. I even brought this up here for you.
So the smile that you see right now isn't just for right now. Skylar has worked hard. Again, she started out as a floater, and she worked in every department. For those of you that don't know what a floater is, that's the person that goes in and fills in when somebody's out sick, or when they're out on vacation, or when you have a need. That person went from department to department, and had worked in just about every department in the county at the time that she was promoted, and went in to work in the planning department as the admin in the planning department. And her talent was known by us almost immediately. And so as we had opportunities to move her along, we did, and we always did it with the encouragement of the places where she had worked previously. They always gave good recommendations, and you couldn't help but notice her enthusiasm, her willingness to work, her thirst to know more and do more. All of those things showed through. When Cheryl retired and it came time to hire a clerk, I came to the chairman and said, "I've got the person that should be this." Now, she's young, she's only been here a couple of years, but she works really hard, she'll pick it up quickly. She had been acting as our assistant clerk for a little while, and you told me, "Let's take a look." And so I went to her and I said, "Are you interested? Is it something you..." And she was kind of nervous, "Well, I don't know if I can do all this." And I said, "You can do it, we'll send you to school, you're gonna be perfect for this job. You all agreed, you hired her unanimously, and she has been perfect for this job." Again, her enthusiasm is unparalleled. On a bad day, she's just like this, she's smiling. And so you can't ask for more. She's grown in the job. She's gone from knowing nothing to being able to anticipate the needs of both the board and me. A lot of times, I don't have to ask, and what I was about to ask for shows up on my desk, already done, ready to go. So you all have made a good hire as a clerk, someone who's been here only four, five years. We hope that we get 30 out of this one, because she's done a fantastic job and has well-earned the Employee of the Month. And so congratulations, and you get to take all of this back with you.
Nobody loves their job any more than that young woman right there. She is unbelievable. As chairman, she works with me every single day. If there's something at 4:30 or 5 o'clock that we've shut down and gone home, and something hits me at 7 o'clock at night, or vice versa, I can call her on her cell phone, and vice versa, and we can talk about it, and it can get done the very next morning. That's how dedicated she is. I can call her anytime of the day, anytime of the evening, when, when after hours, and she's there, and she answers the phone, and she gets it done. And we are blessed, Skylar, to have you as our clerk, and we appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our Employee of the Year, and Elizabeth Riley, our HR director, will make that presentation.
Good morning.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I am honored today to be presenting the 2024 Employee of the Year. Dare County's employees are our number-one asset. They give it their all to make Dare County the best. Dare County would not be what it is if it wasn't for our employees, who work tirelessly around the clock to provide our residents and visitors. We are extremely fortunate to have each and every one of them. Each month, subordinate supervisors and department heads nominate employees to go above and, that go above and beyond the line of duty, employees who go the extra mile, employees who shine bright. The nominations come to Human Resources, and then the Employee of the Month Committee meets to discuss and decide on these stellar employees. This committee is made up of past Employee of the Month recipients. At this time, I would like to recognize the committee. Please stand and remain standing. Stephen Stetson from Communications, Kaitlin Kite from Public Relations, Dustin Peel with Finance, and Carleen Darcy with EMS. Thank you all for what you have done in 2024 to make this program fun and successful. Thank you. The Employee of the Year is chosen from the 12 recipients that received Employee of the Month in 2024. Now for the 2024 Employee of the Month recipients. Please stand and remain standing. Dustin Wallston, Sheriff. Eileen Proctor, Communications. James Bassnight, Public Works. Misty Parnell, Health and Human Services. Stephen Burritt, EMS. Matt Hester, IT. Sherian Sarsfield, Water. Josh Coltrane, Health and Human Services. Molly Greenwood, EMS. Matt DeBrowski, Finance. Brandon Patzel, Parks and Recreation. And Roxanna Ballinger, Health and Human Services. Thank you all for what you do to make Dare County a wonderful place to work and live. You are truly our asset, and we appreciate you. Now for the 2024 Employee of the Year. Congratulations to our IT Director, Matt Hester. And Matt's family is here as well, so you all can join him up at the podium, and his whole department.
Well, I can't do this alone. I have stellar staff. They're just the best. They allow me to be my best, and I hope that I encourage them to be their best, and just do everything that we can to make sure the county's up and running. Kind of flustered today, because we've got a little bit of a situation down there in Bucks that I'm trying to work out at the same time all this is going on. But yeah, I'm just, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Again, thanks to my staff for allowing me to do this, and they're awesome, and I couldn't do it without them. Thank you, guys.
Before we go to public comment, those of you that received an award this morning, if you would go right out this way, so Kaitlin can get a picture, please, and we'll wait just a second for the room to clear. Is Buckson up?
It's still working.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, please conclude your remarks. On my list, the first person I have is Janine Emery.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Emery.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Hello, my name's Janine Emery, and I'm from Manio. I realize everyone here today cares about the people in this community, and because of that, I would like to share with you that the Office of Management and Budget sent a vaguely worded, two-page document to all federal agencies Monday night, January 27, directing them to temporarily pause all activities related to obligation or disbursement of all federal financial assistance. Now, some programs that could be affected by this freeze include, but are not limited to, Medicaid, school breakfast lunch, Section 8 rental assistance, temporary assistance for needy families, grants for childcare, Head Start, Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, EPA Grants for Clean Water Infrastructure. Now, a federal judge in Rhode Island has formally blocked the administration's spending freeze, saying in an order that it is likely a violation of the Constitution. However, since we have no idea how long the pause will be in effect, or how it will be resolved ultimately, as our local leadership, I feel it will be imperative to at least begin conversations discussing how we can assist with the needs of our community members who rely on all of these essential programs in case the need does arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emery.
Next, I have Aida Havil.
Welcome this morning, Aida.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Aida Havil, and I live in Salvo. After I lost the election last year, I had thought that my days of public comment were over. But after hearing the discussion last month about the Wanchies land dispute, I felt I had to come today and say something. I'd like to recap the history of the dispute. In 2023, the developer submitted plans for a 60-unit cluster home development, which was in accordance with the then-current Cluster Home Ordinance. His plans were approved, even though they were not a match for the character and history of Wanchies. The citizens of Wanchies spoke out. Dare County then removed cluster homes from its zoning regulations so that a development like the one the developer was planning could not happen again, either in Wanchies or in most other unincorporated areas of Dare County. And at that meeting, this board apologized, and it appeared that the apology was accepted by the citizens of Wanchies. The citizens of Wanchies then ran two candidates in the primary last year, and both of them won against two sitting county commissioners. And those two candidates are both on the board today. Meanwhile, the developer scaled back his plans from a 60-unit development to a 48-unit development, a reduction of 20%. Now, you all are considering spending, either spending several million dollars of taxpayer money to buy back this land, or use your power of eminent domain to condemn this land. In my personal opinion, neither of these possibilities represents good or responsible government. I am confused as to why you would spend money paid by all the taxpayers of Dare County to buy back land at an inflated price when the developer did nothing wrong, he has scaled back the project, and we-
Duke Garrity, Governor Affairs Director out of Banks Home Builders Association. I want to speak about the Wanchese property too. Ms. Havil did an excellent job just now. There's no sense repeating the history of what's going on. Home Builders Association, 450 members, we struggle with affordable housing, any housing, workforce housing, every day. Very hard to build. It's hard to find land. It's hard to find a project that you could do that would be, that would coincide with the feelings in Dare County. And everybody talks about it. We need some workforce housing. We have restaurants that close in the height of the season. We have houses that take us a year to build that used to take us four to five months. Every industry down here needs labor. So, one of our members did the research, found a 10-acre piece of property in Wanchese, bought it, hired architects, engineers, lawyers, bankers, and all to put the project together. During the final courses, after you approved the project, he was working with the state on the septic, and some of the drainage, some of the stormwater, doing his diligence to bring out a good project, and reduced it from 60 houses to 48. And I'm sure this is going to cost him a little bit more money, but he's doing it. This is available rental housing for our workforce. The average house, or the median house in Dare County, is $600,000. Kill Devil Hills is the highest in the state. So, we're going to have some, so the idea and the American dream that people want to have their own house, you have to work very hard to get it. But in the meantime, they need a nice, clean, safe place to live. So, I was shocked last month when I heard eminent domain come up. I said, well, what did he do wrong? This is a project that's approved. He didn't ask for tax subsidies. He didn't go for low-income tax credits. He's putting a workforce housing project together with all rental units. One of the special uses, you said, could this make sure that this will be long-term rental? And that's what he did. He agreed. This is going to be available. Let's not even talk about affordable anymore. Let's talk about available. So, when I heard eminent domain, what a precedent to set. What about people in another town? We talk about not in my backyard, NIMBYism. I've heard that word thrown around for the last year. This is it. We're starting to legislate by mob rule. I went through the same thing. I heard the same complaints. And next, when we had a multifamily project, which was a good project and not a big project. And the town wanted to put a moratorium in it, and we lost a good builder, and he said, you know, I had enough. Most people, they look forward to us coming in and building some workforce housing. And he said, we come to Dare County, and everybody's against it. We can't be against it forever. So, I hope when you discuss it in a few minutes, I know it's coming up on the agenda after public comment, we don't talk about eminent domain anymore. This is a good project, maybe not the best, maybe not perfect, but it's a project, and we do need housing for our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Duke. That's all the silence. Anyone else like to speak this morning? Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioners. I hadn't planned to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
But I feel like I have to represent the Wanchese Preservation Society.
Please, before the, just give your name and who.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lorraine Tillitt, Wanchese, North Carolina. I would just like to say that everybody is praising the developer for scaling down the property. It was not his choice to scale down the property. We went with the state constantly checking on the permit, checking on the submittal, all the things that he did wrong, all the submissions. He had to change engineers. He probably had to change lawyers. And he changed his system from six systems to handle 10 houses each to one giant system right next to the Dare Challenge place there in Wanchese that is wonderful for our county. And they are going to have to have this septic system right next to them constantly. And another thing, if the one system failed, everything would go out. Before, you had, if one system went out, you had five others to protect it. So, I don't want to hear how wonderful Brad Allen was and what he's doing for our community. We are not against development. We love development. We want single-family homes in that area. Now that it's all cleared, it's a beautiful piece of property. I mean, it is so big. We didn't realize it was that big. And I just thank you for listening. I thank you for your compassion, for what you've done, and whatever it takes to get it straight, I just, we just praying that it will all work out. And we need facilities down there. We do not have an ambulance. Every community has an ambulance. We've got two of the largest payrolls in Dare County, and they work, these men work, and it's dangerous. And we've got to wait 15 or 20 minutes for an ambulance to come. And so, I thank you for my time, and I hope that the public takes note of this and stops praising somebody for reducing something when it was not his decision.
Thank you, Ms. Tillitt. Any other public comment this morning? Yes, sir.
Welcome this morning, Mitchell.
Mitchell Bateman, resident of Wanchese. Probably been one of the most outspoken residents in these meetings about the cluster home development. Probably also the only person from our community who's bothered to have a private conversation with Mr. Alexander. Mine was as recent as Thursday. I met him at his property and spoke with him while it was being cleared. He's not a demon. He saw a business opportunity. He went forward. His property is not for sale. By his comments to me, his property is not for sale. Eminent domain, because you have the authority to do so, does not make it right. I'm probably going to get shot by my neighbors and the people behind me, but that's okay. Sometimes, there's the right thing to do, and it's not always the popular thing to do. Leave it alone. It's a dead issue. The man's going to build the units, 48. The reason he's going to build 48? Because the sand at the back corner of that lot that he has is perfect to put one large septic tank system on, according to his statements to me on Thursday. That's why he scaled back. But in doing so, it's going to make him only be able to put 48 there instead of 60. I've always been a person that if I wanted to know what someone thought, I went to them. I didn't go to somewhere else or somebody else. I went to them. And these are his statements to me as of Thursday. Do I like what he's doing there? I told him to his face, absolutely not. But do you have the right to? Absolutely, you do. Taking somebody's property by eminent domain because you don't like what he's doing is wrong. Congratulations, scholar.
Thank you, Mitchell.
Any other public comment this morning? Matt, are we up in Wanchese? Any public comment in Wanchese? Um, Wanchese.
Yeah, it should be working.
Any public comment from Buxton?
Yes. Our first speaker is Jay Phillips.
Welcome, Mr. Phillips.
Good morning, everybody. I just, I want to take a moment. Jay Phillips from Avon with the old Fish House property in Buxton. I just wanted to say that, you know, I came last month and presented our program to you all, and as a person who deals with the public myself quite a bit, we don't get thank yous very often. We get more complaints, you know, 50 complaints than one compliment for all the work we do. I just wanted to say thank you because you all have been very responsive this month. And I just want to make sure you understand, we appreciate it. There's seven board directors that I work with that are all through the county, and, you know, they've watched and listened to everything and expressed their appreciation that you all have been responsive, that helped us work with trying to get a grant for that building, and we may not be successful getting it, but at least you're willing to work with us to try to get it, and really appreciate that. Before using up all my time, I wanted to point out to people a program that we're trying to create awareness for, and that's that we operate and host the high school sailing And it's something that we're just trying to create a space holder for the next group of kids that are coming up that are super talented. We have eight and 12-year-olds, and the wonderful sport fishing crowd and commercial fishing crowd may not think sailors are worth paying much attention to, but I can guarantee them that a 10- or 11-year-old knows where to put the fenders, he knows what a spring line is, he knows what a stern line is, he knows how to take care of a boat, wash it and clean it, and boats are boats. Okay? So, and they get to start at seven or eight years old. The high school program, there are 300-plus universities, colleges, and academies out there, and they are hard-pressed to find talent because there aren't many high school programs around the country. So, if you have kids that want to get into an Ivy League school, or a Naval Academy, or a Coast Guard Academy, those coaches have wild cards for admissions because those schools don't like to lose in sports. And I just want to point that out. We have space for 14 sailors for our high school sailing program down here. We've only got two at the moment in Hatteras, and we have three up in first flight. So, there's a lot of room. It doesn't take a lot of kids to do. There's a three-person minimum. And the model is all over the country where they do have it, like Wrightsville Beach, or Hampton, or Norfolk, or Annapolis, is it has to be hosted by a club because the club has the safety boats, the certified coaches. The club has the training and the certifications and the waterfront location that all the area schools take advantage of. And that's why we're here as a nonprofit, a community sailing program, is to place ourselves at the disposal of the school system if they'll take an effort to take advantage of it. Having the insurance means we take the liability. It shouldn't be on the school, and I know that's an issue with North Carolina schools and water activities. So, I just want to put it out there, we do this. I want to say thank you again for listening last month, and I look far forward to talking to Mr. Outen and Ms. Ballance and you all. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Our next speaker is Jeff France.
Welcome this morning, Jeff.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Jeff France. I'm both a property owner and a small business owner here in Buxton. While what I do may not be life-altering, it is, in fact, just another small cog in what we do here in this community. However, the message our BCA is presenting yet again and has presented to you is a life-altering message. I'd like to take a moment to thank the board for everything they have contributed and supported towards the efforts of our Buxton Civic Association. And also, a heartfelt thanks goes out to all our committee members. That being said, if all I do is bring nothing more than a fresh face, hammering home the importance of protecting our main artery, NC-12, that is supplying the heartbeat of Hatteras, not that any of you need reminding, but I shall say it again anyway, it's a lifeline to our school buses, our delivery trucks, our exports, and of course, a great big chunk of our government salaries through our tax dollars being through tourism. Without that lifeline, we're all left in a dire situation. I want to thank you for allowing me this brief moment to be an echo of our BCA's efforts. And in closing, may it be God's very own will that we all continue to come together, arm in arm, shouting it out from our little bump of a mountaintop here in Buxton on this sandbar. We all come home. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
No further comment from Buxton.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment, and that brings us to item six on the agenda, and that is the Brad Alexander property discussion, and I'll turn that back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. Recently, the Vice Chairman and myself, Vice Chairman of House and I, reached out to Mr. Alexander and asked him if he would sit down with us and have a conversation with us, and he was more than happy to do that. We were pursuing, once again, the possibility of purchasing the property from him as a board, and we had a really, really good civil conversation with Mr. Alexander. I can assure you this morning that this board was not willing to offer him the $6 million that he wanted for the property, which was about a month or so ago. As a matter of fact, when we had the conversation, he said that, having further thought about it, that he was not willing to sell the property any longer. So, the purchase of it was off the table. He said that he had really, really thought about it long and hard, that he now is proud of the fact that he's going to provide 48 homes for families in the area, and that, in all due respect to us, he appreciated having the conversation, but a simple fact of the matter that he was not willing to sell the property any longer. Once again, I reiterate that the board went into that conversation with the possibility of certainly purchasing it, but not at the price that he originally, originally said five when we talked to him. Then he came back, and after clear-cut it, he wanted six, and our board was certainly not willing to pay that kind of money. With respects to condemnation, this board would be not doing their duty if we didn't entertain it because one of my fellow commissioners brought it up at the meeting, so we had discussions about it, and we'll address that when I finish my comments here this morning. But we were looking at every single angle and way to try to perhaps maybe resolve this issue for the residents in Wanchese. He was, he was, could not have been more polite, could not have been more engaging. He was concerned about three or four of us and the comments that we made at the last meeting about him personally, and I made one of those, and I made sure I personally apologized to him for that comment, and he accepted. There were several other commissioners that had made some negative comments. With all that said and done, we had a very, very good conversation. of the matter that he was not willing to sell the property any longer. Once again, I reiterate that the board went into that conversation with the possibility of certainly purchasing it, but not at the price that he originally, originally said five when we talked to him. Then he came back and after clear-cut it, he wanted six, and our board was certainly not willing to pay that kind of money. With respects to condemnation, this board would be not doing their duty if we didn't entertain it because one of my fellow commissioners brought it up at the meeting, so we had discussions about it, and we'll address that when I finish my comments here this morning. But we were looking at every single angle and way to try to perhaps maybe resolve this issue for the residents in Wanshees. He was, he was, could not have been more polite, could not have been more engaging. He was concerned about three or four of us and the comments that we made at the last meeting about him personally, and I made one of those, and I made sure I personally apologized to him for that comment, and he accepted. There were several other commissioners that had made some negative comments. With all that said and done, we had a very, very good conversation, and we left and we shook hands, and he assured us that it would be a very nice development, and that he would not, all the rumors about putting module homes on stilts, he said, "Bob, I'm gonna build it just like we build regular housing facilities." He said, "It's all sticks," and he said, "We're not cutting any corners. It's going to be an extremely nice development in Wanshees." So with that said, we shook hands, and we both, Vice Chairman and I both said, "We hope you hold true to your words." Did I cover that completely, Vice Chairman?
Yeah, absolutely. I couldn't, I'd be more impressed of how that meeting went. Like I said, it was very civil, very cordial. We did have open discussions on both sides. He made it very clear that he's got too much time and money invested in this project and did not want to sell the property, wanted to see the project run through. And like I said, we had a very in-depth conversation with him to let him know that, and he understands that people in Wanshees are upset with him. He gets that, and he's going to try to do what he can to make it right. But it was, like I said, it was a very cordial conversation that we had, and like Mr. Chairman said, you know, at the end of the conversation, we stood up together and shook hands and hoped that the project does move in a good, clean way. So I think that's pretty much where we stand on it right now.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. With all that being said, I will yield to my fellow commissioners to see if there's any further action that my fellow commissioners would like to take, and I will start with Commissioner Burris.
Thank you, Chairman Woodard. I would like to say, you know, it's not a perfect situation. We've exhausted every avenue, you know, every thought process we could undertake. We've tried again and again, even calling a special meeting in the middle of last month. At this point, it's just, it's time to move forward. I would, I couldn't have said it any better than what Mitchell Bateman said when he just stood up there at open public comment, and, you know, all we can do is hope that Mr. Alexander does a fantastic job down there and that this is a benefit to the community, and that's what we'll just hope for moving forward. I appreciate all the support of the folks in Wanshees. I appreciate the people that stood up and shared their voice. It's my hometown. I love it, and I hate to see this particular change, but like I said, we'll just have to bear with it, move forward, and hope it's a good thing for us. And I'd like to thank the rest of the board members for their willingness to have that special meeting last month and let us voice our concerns one last time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Balance.
This was a tough one for me because Hatteras Village has been in this position as well, and it's tough when you see your community changing in a way that you're maybe not ready for. Hatteras had a piece of property that was offered to their civic association. They chose not to purchase it, and it was purchased to a builder who put in four, four-story condos with a septic, a separate septic. So I understand the whole septic piece because it does concern me greatly. However, it does set a very unfavorable precedent to go in and start taking land when we don't like what's happening. He did what he had to do. He got the proper permits, and I'm glad you're not, I'm glad it's not four condo buildings. I'm glad it's single-family buildings. I think right now it's hard to envision that change, but I hope that he does stay true to his word in the 12-month year-round housing. It does check a big plus for our housing situations, and I look forward to seeing it. I hope, it's my wish and my prayer that it is an absolutely wonderfully beautiful, successful neighborhood, and I think in the end, it's going to work out the way everybody will be happy with it. I know it's hard to see that now, but I'm good with where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross.
Okay. Had a little trouble with my voice this past week. Duke, Mitchell, thank you both for your comments. Very well said. At the risk of breaking out an extremely dangerous bipartisan agreement precedent here, I'm looking at Ms. Havel, and I thank you for your comments. You have summarized my thoughts on the matter succinctly, all three of you have, and I would concur with those three speakers at public comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Vice Chairman?
The only thing I'd like to add to it is that one of the things that's been brought up several times is transparency in our board and our government. When we had that special meeting, I wanted to make sure that we had every single option that was available to us out to the open, and that was one, to take no action; number two, to buy the property; number three, the thing that was brought up was a possible tax assessment for Wanshees to help pay for it; and number four was eminent domain. It's just like buying a car. There are certain options you like, certain options you don't like, but that option is available, and we wanted to share that with everybody out there. These are the options we had to look at. And like I said, Mr. Alexander, when he met with us, he was very cordial, very professional. He assured us of a good number of things, and I know a lot of people in Wanshees don't want to see this project. I get it. But also, and I said this in our special meeting, I'm torn between the people in Wanshees that don't want this, and I'm also torn between the 48 families that could actually benefit from it. And they could, those 48 families could actually bring some benefits to the community of Wanshees. So at this time, I'm at the point to, let's see what Mr. Alexander can do with the property and see what he can do to enhance the housing in Dare County. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Sir. In a fellowship I belong to, a fellowship saved my life, and one of the sayings we have is, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." I need to accept this. We need to accept this. 1990, I was running down the Woods Road in Kitty Hawk, and I don't know if you guys remember or not, but the Woods Road used to be like a tunnel. All the trees, they met in the center, and that road, when I was a little kid, went from my house in Kitty Hawk, it went basically past Duck, and it meandered up the big hill in the back when you get to Duck and down to the village. When I got home that afternoon, I went to work, and when I came back, Atabank's contractors had gone there and they cut trees, and they torn my lovely, quiet, serenity place all to the dickens to put a road there. It needed to be paved. Their trucks moved that, meandered that property every day, and it was tearing the existing Woods Road all to pieces anyway, but they cut it down. But that was my life, and that was my quiet place. That was my piece of place. And so I needed to pray then for serenity and for the peace of accepting the change that came with it, and I think that's what I need to do today and let this thing go. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Commissioner Creve?
Yeah, speaking to what Duke said, you know, I agree. When I campaigned, I am a minimal government guy. I can't be a minimal government believer and then decide that I'm going to condemn somebody's property because I don't like it. So I know that's not going to be a real popular opinion in Wanshees either, but it is the right thing to do, like Mitchell said. In saying that, I still do believe in that American dream, Duke. I want there to be areas where we can, where somebody can buy a lot and build their own house that's from here, who can raise their kids there, die there, and get their ashes spread in the backyard. I still believe in that, and I want to make sure there are places like that available so that we can't develop every square inch of the island. That said, I believe this is going to put this discussion to a rest. I personally am glad it's over for my own mental health, and appreciate everybody involved. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments, but I'm not going to make a motion to do anything further either.
Thank you, Commissioner Creve. This has been a long process, and I want to commend my fellow commissioners prior and present for the amount of time that they've spent in addressing this issue in Wanshees. It's been a long, as I said, process. I have empathy for both sides of the issue, but I will stand with my fellow commissioners and not move forward with respects to any condemnation of that property, as well as not spending some $6 million to purchase the property. I'm going to hold Mr. Alexander to his statements to Vice Chairman House and myself, that it'll be a project that the community will be proud of. So at this time, as far as I'm concerned and my fellow commissioners, this is the last conversation we'll have with respects to that property. County Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a special use permit renewal number 072008. It's the application of IG Holdings LLC and Albemarle Associates Limited and Morgan's up to make that presentation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is a request to renew a special use permit. Albemarle Associates, on behalf of IG Holdings LLC, they requested a renewal of special use permit number 07-2008. The property is located at 40494 NC Highway 12 in Avon. The applicant previously obtained a conditional use permit for the project in 2003. There were, there was a subsequent amendment in 2017. However, the project was not initiated within the required timeframe. Nothing has changed since the initial submission, and they have met all the requirements of the ordinance, and the project engineer is present if you have any questions.
County Manager?
Just for the record, all the parties have been sworn. A renewal is the same as the initial. We have to make the findings of fact. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, just like we do with other special use permits, and so Morgan has sort of outlined the basics, and Mr. Delusia, do you have anything to add?
Good morning. Y'all did a great job on that last one, I thought. I'm John Delusia from Albemarle Associates. My client, IG Holdings, had previously had this second four-bedroom house approved back in 2017 and didn't pursue it. My client understands that he has to provide some housing for his employees if he wants to have employees, and that's what this will be used for. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
John, thank you so much, and once again, I'll ask the question. The applicant is agreeable to the conditions, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. County Manager?
Are there any changes, Mr. Delusia, from the original SGP to what the renewal is, or is it on the same terms?
No.
Same terms?
We use the same, we use the same plan we used in 2017 when it was approved last time.
And then you consent to and agree to the findings of fact that are contained in the permit?
Yes.
And you also consent, as the chairman asks, to the terms and the conditions of the permit?
Yes.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that special use permit number 7-2008 and the associated site plan submitted by IG Holdings LLC, Albemarle Associates LTD for the renewal of the group development be approved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, John.
Chairman, item eight on the agenda is a public hearing for a zoning tax amendment to section 22-65, which are the procedures for our special use permit. Over the years, we've done special use permits. You've done a number of them, and we've had a couple come up that have had some concerns that we don't have standards or there needs to be more standards in it, and as we looked at that, looked at the case law, looked at some of the things, I think some of those concerns are well-founded. So this is an amendment that is being pushed forward by staff. It hasn't come from anybody individually, and Noah, if you want to come up and talk about, tell what we've done and tell why we've done it, and then we can have the public hearing, and then if you all have questions or anything else, we can go from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, commissioners, as the county manager stated, review of several of the last special use permits, there's been some information brought to light that our ordinance lack guiding standards, and in doing so, about the same timeframe, the UNC School of Government released an updated publication to their quasi-judicial handbook that goes over some of the procedures and standards that should be incorporated into an ordinance. These standards have been reviewed by the courts throughout the years, dating back to cases going even back to the 1970s. The North County Court of Appeals has approved four general standards for special use permits. The approved standard is required that the use does not materially endanger the public health or safety, does not meet, does meet all required conditions and specifications, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property, or be, or must be a public necessity, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. As these standards are drafted in the draft language that's there, somebody deemed to have standing could come up and speak in opposition to the applicant. They would have to present factual competent evidence that the applicant has not met those standards, and if they're able to do so at that point in time, the applicant would have the chance to submit his rebuttal with factual evidence on how he has met those standards. And then your position is the governing body would review the evidence before you and determine who has put forth the most factual and competent evidence, and not just leaving a special use permit up to the dimensional requirements that are found internal to the zoning district, so.
And one thing to add to that, as you make those findings, they have to be substantiated by fact. I can't stand up and just say, "My property value is going to go down." Well, I might think it is, but I've got to be able to have something to support that bare assertion. Same with the other four standards that are there as well. So that's no different than what the rules are now, it's just that we've articulated those standards and put them in the ordinance.
Yeah, I agree, guys. One through three, we're pretty clear on that, but when I read number four, it felt, and I don't mean this negatively, it felt squishy. Read number four out loud, Noah.
Will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan.
So what that is intended to get to is you have a land use plan, and you have a comprehensive, and you may have other comprehensive plans in some area in the county, and if it's a residential area, then you can't put in a cement plant.
Yeah, obviously, that's pretty clear. I'm saying in the gray areas.
As you narrow that gap, you've got to make findings of fact to say that somehow it's not, you can't just say, "It's squishy, and I don't think it fits." It's, you've got to have more than that. There's got to be some evidentiary basis to do that. That's a standard that, again, is recognized, and Noah went through a number of other ordinances throughout the state to try to flesh out where that was going, what the case law had done. We looked at the cases, we looked at the school of government, and that one is pretty routine through all of them, so, and it's what the Court of Appeals has accepted as well. So we included it in there, recognizing what you just said.
And if you look at the land use plan, it's a policy document, so there's, you know, a number of policies in there. I believe our plan probably has over 50 to 60 policies that are in there. So when pres- So when presenting that evidence, you know, the applicant or their expert witness would look at the plan and say, you have this in your document, you know, we have a policy that supports such and such. This is how my special use would be supported by that.
So you're saying, Noah, that you do believe there's enough empirical sort of data and/or fact-based evidence that number four won't be just, pardon my term, squishy? You'll have solid base.
It would be up to the applicant to have either his testimony or expert witness.
All right. I'm not going to beat it up. It's just that one jumped out at me.
Just one last thing to give you just a little bit of comfort. In looking at the cases that deal with these things, I'm not saying there isn't one, but we didn't find one, I didn't see one, where that issue was the determining factor on how the court ruled either way. That wasn't the decision-making part of the court's rulings in most of the cases.
Thank you.
I got a question here.
Go ahead.
Thank you for bringing that up. So I bring back the analogy I did to the 1990, they cut all the trees down on the woods road. Wouldn't that bring into a public opinion? And if the person's, it would not?
That would not, because what that was, there's a right-of-way there, and you have rights under a right-of-way agreement with DOT to remove vegetation. And so they were doing under a right that's guaranteed in the document that gave them the easement to put the road in in the beginning. We're talking about zoning ordinances, and in those situations, a user needs to come to it. We've done, I don't know how many special use permits over the course of a number of years, and what have we had? Two or three that were contested at the most? Two. So for the most part, this is routine. For the most part, people are doing what's expected on their property. It's only when you get an outlier that you have these issues come up. And yeah, those are the hard questions that you all have to answer in trying to make decisions. That paragraph helps you or hurts you, depending on what your view is. If your view is, you're looking for a way to not have that development, then it gives you an opportunity to stop that development if there's enough evidence to support that it doesn't meet that criteria, but you just can't do it because your gut says, don't do it. Or if you do do it that way, then you risk challenge, and you don't know how that'll come out, so.
Okay. Just when it says in harmony with the area, that is kind of...
It is.
Well, how about with the Hatteras situation, where you have these four condos, where it's not, is that something that you could fight?
I'll just use that situation. If the zoning ordinance in the land use plan allows multifamily, and the zoning ordinance allows a height that's within that height, and the zoning ordinance allows the density that's of that density, then the zoning ordinance contemplates that use. And to say it doesn't fit in harmony with the neighborhood would be wrong, because you've adopted ordinance that specifically says that is a use that you would allow in that thing. So how can you then argue that the use that we said is okay somehow isn't in harmony with the neighborhood? So again, it's not, it isn't necessarily as squishy as it sounds. It depends on the situation.
It does sound squishy. It does sound squishy.
I know it does.
It comes down to, like, it's opinion.
It's not opinion in the situation that I just described.
I mean, it feels like it's opinion.
So if you've got a zoning ordinance that says you can have a four-story condominium that has X number of units and this much lot coverage and this much parking and all that, our ordinance says you can do this, I come to you to do that. You can say, eh, no, that doesn't fit the neighborhood. I said, well, then why did you adopt an ordinance that said we could do it? You wouldn't adopt an ordinance that doesn't fit the character of your neighborhood if you didn't think that was what the character of your neighborhood should be. I mean, that's what the court would tell you.
You have the option.
Now I want to change more ordinances.
Well, there you go. And that is, in fact, the answer. If there's something that you don't like in a neighborhood, then you need to change. But you've got to do it before the developer runs his application in.
You've got to be proactive on that.
And you have the option of removing that, the number four, the squishiness, if you don't like it. You can remove that one from the guiding standards. That doesn't have to be part of the draft language that is adopted.
And the planning board met to do this too, right? Like, they all were...
The planning board reviewed this, yes.
They reviewed this, and they were all, were they all in...
Yes. Let's have the public hearing, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, we'll have the public hearing.
Okay.
As of time has been set aside for a public hearing to hear public comment on this amendment to the S U P ordinance, the rules of public comment apply here. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that issue? Seeing none here, is there anyone in Buxton would like to speak to that issue?
Yeah, nobody.
Nobody in Buxton. With that, we would close the public hearing. So now it's before you to adopt. You can adopt, you can amend. If you're uncomfortable with that provision, you can say, let's don't include that, we can take that out and adopt it without it. The pleasure is yours.
I want to ask, just for information purposes, when this was brought before the planning board on January the 7th, was there any public comment with respects to substantially injuring the value of the adjoining property? Was anyone present?
No, sir.
And nobody was present to provide information with respects to that, correct?
No, sir.
And also, was there anyone present with respects to, it was not in harmony with the area?
No, sir, there was no public comment at the planning board meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you, Noah. Is any other comments from the board, questions?
The only other thing I'd say, I think the concerns of Commissioner Balance and Commissioner Ross are well-founded. In a contested case, no matter which way you rule for it or against it, that does leave an avenue to litigate. The other things are more concrete, and so if you're trying to avoid all chances of litig, or not all chances, but litigation after one of a special use permit is authorized, then maybe that is something that you don't want to do to open that door.
No, I'm actually fine with it on there. I'm just saying it did grant additional space or gray area to challenge something that a party, one side or the other, might feel is an egregious violation of what this is intended to do. So I want to keep it in, just that it was different to me than the first three.
And it's got to be substantial evidence to, you know, say to the contrary.
But it would also open up the door, for me as a commissioner, if something was not in harmony, although it was zoned in that area, and it was approved by the area to vote against it, which is going to open me up.
If you found there was sufficient evidence to support that, I mean, you can't, you can't...
The harmony, the harmony, it's still gray area for me.
An S U P is a trial. You put on evidence, you hear the evidence, and then you apply the evidence that you hear to the criteria that you have to make a decision. And so there's got to be evidence to meet that criteria, and you're the finder of fact. You've got to decide whether there's sufficient evidence to do that. Me standing up and saying it doesn't make it so. There's got to be something factual we do do that. And again, I go back and use the example that we talked about with Commissioner Balance, so.
I think Kirby and I are on St. Peter's Day.
Yeah, I like leaving it in there personally, because it does give us an option. Because, I mean, what doesn't fit in with the area it's located in general conformity? Harmony, that's the word there, though, because, I mean, I was in one of the quasi judicial hearings in here before I was commissioner, and it was not a very harmonious setting. So, anyway, I like to leave that one in there, just in case, you never know.
Got you. Anyone else? With that being said, the pleasure of the board.
Motion to adopt the draft amendments to section 22-65 procedures for special use permit review and approval be adopted as recommended by the planning board.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by Commissioner Creve. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. County Manager, we're going to take a 10-minute break. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order, and I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. This is a presentation by the Buxton Civic Association. We have Heather Jeanette, Brian Harris, Jeff Dawson, and Brett Barley here with us today, so if you all would come forward.
Thank you all so much for taking the time to be here today and bring us up to date on what you good folks are doing on Hatteras.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Sorry it took us so long to get this together after Byway. Just after we went to Byway in November, a lot of things happened, a lot of contacts were made. So we just, you know, we felt like we really needed to redo the presentation with a lot more information. Heather's going to get to the majority of the presentation, the meat and potatoes. A lot of the things you guys are already familiar with here, just because you guys have been involved since day one, thankfully, and we really appreciate that. So I'm just going to step aside, let Heather do her thing. Both Jeff and Brett will also speak a little bit, and then we'll kind of recap some of the new information that we have found. So I'll just let Heather take it over.
Good morning, Heather.
Good morning, how are you?
Fine, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. So it's interesting to present this to you as opposed to an audience down south, so it's going to be a little bit different, but bear with me. So this is, our purpose in going down there was to give a really in-depth overview of the FUD situation, of the naval base, of what happened, where things stood, and where we hoped it would allow us to go. Even then, I looked back, and the abstract for that was due in August. And then going in November, it was a completely different scenario than what the abstract. So it's really a rapidly changing situation. So my first job down there was to introduce them to Buxton, which is my hometown. It's my favorite place on the planet. It's, you guys don't need that level of introduction, but here's what we've got going on, right? We've got the lighthouse, we've got Cape Point, we've got one of the most iconic surf breaks on the East Coast, we've got kite surfing, surf fishing, we have apple uglies, okay? Absolutely. So, you know, I think we're a valuable asset, and if we couldn't appeal to your heart or your stomach, then I think we can appeal to your wallet, not just yours, but the entire states, because our little population of 1,500 people entertains over 50,000 people at peak season. Hatteras Island as a whole, based on the 2022 economic impact study that the county commissioned, our tourism expenditures are in excess of $366 million. We give back 31 million to the state. By that report, Hatteras Island plays a disproportionately large role in the county's economy. So, you know, we got it going on down there, right? We also had an absolute dumpster fire of a former naval base that was leaching petroleum actively into the sand, into the ocean, and was a major eyesore, public health crisis, and problem that needed immediate resolution. And it was amazing how many of our neighbors to the south had no idea. These are Daniel Pollan's photos, they speak volumes. So you guys are aware of how we got here, right? It was a naval base under a special use permit from the Park Service, the Coast Guard that assumed the use, then they abandoned it and was returned to management by the Park Service. It was a fully functioning community. They had a dance hall, they had a commissary. It was its own thing, and then it was our thing. The special use permit is very clear that it should have been restored to its natural state. That is not what happened. It was leveled to the ground, it was buried, and they hoped it would stay that way for the remainder of, you know, until it was no longer their problem. So this all kind of came to a head a little over a year ago. The storm events made the area really, really prevalent. I've been there my entire life, and I'm going to tell you that I didn't have any idea about it. I don't live on Lighthouse Road. I live over in the woods. So, you know, I was educated right along with you guys as this was going on. Visible sheen, strong odors, headaches. Brett had to take like 13 dawn baths to get it out of his hair and clothes. So as this garnered attention, people got involved, we started looking, what's been done about this in the past? What are they doing about this now? I'm breathing through this, because you guys know about this, okay? Here's where we come along. We're unincorporated there, right? We don't have a town manager, we don't have a board, we don't have planning departments. So we kind of had to become our own voice, and this has been such a beautiful example of when community members come together for a cause. We're really proud of that. We're really proud of the partnerships that we've made here in other parts of the state. It shows, you know, when you use a collective voice and you do it in a way that is seeking help instead of just screaming at people, you can get some things done. So these are some headlines that point to that, and this is my favorite slide. So it was super fun to go into a room in Wilmington full of Army Corps of Engineer people who had just been talking about inter-agency collaboration and harmony and working together and get up here and go, that's really great, but that's not what we've felt for the past nine months. We've felt a lot of finger pointing and blame shifting, and kind of, that's not my problem. And we were left wondering, well, whose is it? So they did some things. The beach looks completely different now, even though they still maintain the fact that under their wording and under their authority, they could not remove the physical hazards unless they had to do so to get rid of the contaminants, which is what happened, fortunately. So the Army Corps, as part of their rapid Phase One response, was able to go down and remove most everything that were in those photos. You know, they said that because it was left safe at the time, that that was why their wording read that way. We have to wonder, was that really a safe way to leave it? I think not. But here we are. So they have come, we look forward to next month, having a more formal restoration advisory board named. We look forward to more formal and consistent interaction with the Army Corps, with the Park Service, with the board here, with all the stakeholders, to make sure that this stays something on someone's radar until it's done really to completion. So they've removed a ton of contaminated sand, water, structure. It's looking good. So that was a very sped-up version of the history of the FUD site, because, again, you guys have been there with us. But here we shift from, okay, here was a problem, what's a lesson that we've taken from it? Why did this happen? Why did a nothing kind of storm event expose all of this? And what does that mean going forward? We need beach stabilization, and we need it yesterday. Now, yesterday. And this is where I tapped out, because I'm not going to speak to a room of coastal engineers down there or you guys about these words. You know, they were throwing words around turbidity curtain down there. I was like, I could have put that in my slideshow, that's a cool one, you know? I don't know about this, but my friends behind me know a lot more about it, so I would love for you to hear from them.
Hey, Jeff.
Good afternoon, or almost afternoon, anyway. Thank you all for giving us this opportunity to come up and talk publicly about this. As Heather said, we went down to the Bywell Conference and gave this little speech, and it was received very well. So my part of this is I just kind of give a brief history of Hatteras Island, how the sand moves around, because that's what we're talking about, sand. Hatteras Island was formed over thousands of years, thank you. You can keep that. Yeah. Hatteras Island was formed over thousands of years, the sand washing over a shallow place, leaves, you know, sediment soils behind. Our soils, according to the Park Service and government, come from the tributaries out of the bay, where Heather made me this little map so that I could talk. All the green checkmarks you see, well, up north in Virginia, anyway, are dams. So if our soils and sediments come out of tributaries out of the bay, if you put dams in there, those soil and sediments can no longer travel down and hit the Labrador current where it meets the Gulf Stream, wash over Hatteras Island, thereby replenishing the beaches naturally, the way it was formed originally. There's four major things that I would like to discuss that I think are, you know, taking the sand out of the littoral system before it ever even gets to us. Number one, the dams up in Virginia. According to the Park Service, that's where our soils come from. If you don't allow the soils to get there, it doesn't come to us. Number two is the terminal groin that was built in Oregon Inlet. That interrupts the littoral current, damaging the natural process, no longer allowing, it reflects energy, and doesn't allow the Labrador to bring us our... reflects energy and doesn't allow the Labrador to bring us our natural sand replenishment. So there's, there's two ways. Now, another one is we've dredged both inlets, and I'm all for dredging the inlets. We're a fishing community, we should keep it open, you know? I'm, I'm all for keeping the inlets open. But let's not take the sand out of the inlets and go build bird islands in the sound with it, and then count our bird numbers and blame us for, you know, not managing our shores properly. That sand would have naturally gone back on our beaches, took it out of the system. And then last, but I think the most damning thing is, is since World War II, we have maintained a dune line, the 47 miles of Hatteras Island, and no longer allow that natural overwash that gives us our sand. It actually creates a barrier, whereas the ocean hits it, reflects backwards, and you get this sawing chewing motion, and we're sliding into the hole we're creating. So can't tell Hatteras Island to let nature take its course when we're actively doing everything on a large-scale feasible level to interrupt the natural process. Dams in the rivers, Terminal Groin in the inlet, dredging the inlets, maintaining a dune at a great expense to the tax dollars. It's very, my entire life, I've been told, well, you gotta let nature take its course. But we're not doing that, and it's not really fair to tell Hatteras to let nature take its course while we do the exact opposite everywhere else. Do I have a slide where it shows scalping? Yeah, there we go. So government came in and put jetties in, which Brett's going to elaborate on. As you can see, they, they held sand on the Buxton Oceanfront for 40-some years. They were repaired up until the 90s, and when, when the, the government moved the Lighthouse and decided that it was no longer necessary to keep maintenance of the jetties, we watched our beaches just evaporate. As you can see in the 2021 photo on the bottom left-hand side, you can see basically the island's fairly straight. Where the jetties are, it causes a natural, it's not natural, but it causes a scalping on the leeward side. That's already happened. Those jetties have been there for 50-plus years. They did a great job while they were maintained, but as soon as they started to fall apart, we started losing erosion. There's endless amount of examples of ships wrecking on the outer bar and the beach builds right out to it. My grandmom has news, newspaper clippings in her office still hanging up behind her desk. What we're here to do is just trying to, and, and I wanted to say at the Wilmington Conferences, we're just trying to shine a light on an issue that we've created, and then we're not here to point fingers, we're not saying you did this or anything like that, but, you know, there is a massive problem that we as a community have created. This is very man-made interference, and us losing it is, you know, is detrimental. That, that, I don't know if you can see Highway 12 in there, but that's our lifeline. That's, you know, that, that provides every, you know, electric, sewage, water, power, you name it, all of our stuff is under there. We, you know, can't go to work, can't generate those tax dollars for the county. It behooves us to do something proactively, as opposed to waiting until it gets destroyed and then reacting. We need to be proactive, stabilize the shoreline in any of the many ways. I mean, whether it's jetties or reef balls or sunken ships or whatever, it all works. We just haven't tried, and we would like to be allowed to try. And on that, I'm going to turn it over to Brett to discuss how jetties have worked.
Welcome, Brett.
Morning, y'all. Yeah, so just to elaborate a little bit on what Jeff shared, and obviously what you can see here in the photos, when the Navy came in and started the Navy Base, they built the jetties. That was not to the, you know, public's opinion or option. It was just the Navy's going to do what the Navy needs to do or wants to do. So in doing that, they found out immediately that when they, when they stuck the jetties on a straight beach, they didn't put them far enough into the sand, it eroded behind them. So then they came in in the 70s and did nourishment. So they had built the jetties, and then they backfilled everything behind them with beach nourishment. That worked for 40 years. And what we saw, starting about 10 years ago, I mean, starting longer, but what got exasperated starting 10 years ago, was that what once worked, no longer works once there's holes in it. As you can see in the photos, that middle photo there from 1999, the early 80s, there is a huge knuckle of sand that is in Buxton. When you look at historical surveys of the island, you can look back to the early 1900s, and as the erosion progresses, it progresses evenly in a straight line along the whole coast, until you hit the 70s when the jetties went in. And then all of a sudden, in Buxton, it stops right there, and the rest of the coast continues moving back. And so, since for Buxton, the only nourishment that we have had since the 70s was in 2017, 18, and 2022. Both of those have provided to be like a great example of what the nourishment looks like with lessened jetties, especially because the nourishment in 2022, the jetties were falling apart at a much larger rate than it was in 2017. 2017, 18 nourishment was successful to a point, and that was also one of our most aggressive and large swell seasons that I've personally ever seen. I'm a professional surfer, for those of you that don't know, I've grown up in Buxton my whole life, and what we saw from July and August of 2017 through March of 2018 was historical, as far as surf and swell and energy goes. And the beaches held up, and the nourishment did what it could, you know, they could only do but so much fighting that, that type of swell. Well, in 2022, the nourishment didn't do nearly as well. One, there wasn't as much sand pumped, but two, there was much larger holes in the jetties. I'm not going to go into this part. And so here's where we get into the degradation of the jetties and why we're seeing less effect from the nourishment as the jetties are falling apart. In the 70s, you got whole jetties and nourishment that lasted until the early, like around 2010, so 40 years. And then nourishment in 2017 lasted a smaller amount, because in 2015, what we noticed, as you, I don't know if you can, I guess you can see it, that center photo, January 2015, you can see the amount of sand on the north side of the jetty. That photo's taken looking from south to north. And then you see in October 2015, to the right of it, that sand is gone. And what we noticed as surfers that fall, we didn't understand it at first, but when you, typically, you know, with a hardened structure like that, you can hop in the water and paddle out alongside of it because it stops the current, the downshore flow. That fall, what we noticed, we didn't understand, but we were getting swept out to sea in the places that you normally held ground. We didn't know why until a couple weeks later when the swell died down and we had an abnormally low tide, that there was holes all in the jetty. They were all below the surface, though. And so then what happened was as those holes formed, it's rusting apart, it was then exasperating the current. And once those holes kept getting bigger and bigger, then the current's actually flowing through at a higher rate than if the, it wasn't there at all. You know, think about, you know, when you put your thumb over the end of the hose, if it's wide open, the water can flow through. If you start tightening it off, it flows through much faster. And so that's what we're dealing with now as, you know, 2020 into 2021, current day, there's much larger holes, there's still all those smaller holes in between, and so now it's eroding faster than if it wasn't even there. You know, we built an entire village off of land, and not just the village, but the infrastructure, the telephone poles, the highway, all of these things were built up off of land that has been shored up from what the Navy did back in the 70s. But we've been, you know, the Navy was supposed to return it back to like its pristine condition, but no one was ever going to take the jetties out, but we didn't maintain them. So we've like shot ourselves in the foot by just letting them go. So we have nourishment coming up in 2026, and we have a, a special opportunity to come in and rehab some of these structures and then backfill to it and do exactly what the Navy did back in the 70s that proved to work until the jetties fell apart. Now, what that looks like nowadays, I don't know. There's obviously way more technology, there's way more science behind it. I don't think doing it out of steel is the best call, as we've seen, but we have an opportunity to do something, something to save the lifeline, not just to Buxton, but to Frisco, to Hatteras, to Ocracoke. You know, whether the money that goes to Ocracoke is, you know, on our balance sheet or not, those visitors travel through Hatteras to get there. You know, the fishing community in Hatteras, the closest run to the Gulf Stream, like all of these things rely on that highway being open. And what we saw this past fall, there's nothing there. The beach is, is eroding at an even higher rate. And I would say, as much as you saw, you know, you guys saw on the news the overwash that we had in September and October, those swells were minimal. That was nothing. We haven't even been dealt a true winter storm and seen the capacity of what could happen along that beach. I'm trying to get to updated photo. Oh, these are all Brian's.
We can go back.
This, so this is what I wanted to kind of bring to light. The photo on the left was taken by Donnie Bowers in 2013. You can see there's a line drawn in pink from what was the, basically where the first jetty is. It was drawn from where the very first hole in the jetty was. And then you can see in the photo on the right, that was taken two weeks ago, from where the first jetty in the hole used to be, and both of those lines intersect with Carol Dillon's motel there in the bottom left. So as you can see, what's happening is the beach has been moving back with the holes in the jetties. You can see it, if you go down there periodically throughout the year, you watch the sand move with every swell. As the holes grow, the beach moves back, it does not move back out. It can't, there's nothing to hold it anymore. And so now what we're seeing is, it's a little bit harder to tell in this photo, but if you look at Donnie's photo at the dunes, just before the village, you can tell there's a lot of vegetation, they're really flat, they draw out onto the beach, even though there's not much beach there, it is elevated sand, even if it's under the water and whatnot. Whereas now what we're looking at, the dune line is behind the buildings and it is a cliff. There's a, when you come over the dunes north of Buxton right now, it is a 12 to 15-foot drop down towards the water. We're literally one storm away from all of that washing out. So looking at all of these things and understanding, like going back all the way to the 70s and seeing the progression of the jetties and how that worked, and then seeing the degradation of them and the erosion, it's pretty clear that, you know, something can be done, and it worked before, there's no sense that it wouldn't work again. And this is our chance to, you know, save the whole southern end of the island, Ocracoke, and all that, that entire tourism economy, because that's what Outer Banks lifeline relies on, so.
And, and we've heard all the things. I've heard my whole life, it's not going to happen, we have a hardened structures ban, the Park Service is never going to allow it. We know that that's coming, and what we heard down south was not that. What we heard was, we've gotten variances, please come talk to us, let us walk you through how we did this. There are laws, right? And, and we follow them, except maybe when they don't make sense, and then we question them, and then we look at, okay, maybe this isn't working here. How do we get special consideration? We have reached out to Dave Halick with the Park Service. Where does the Park Service stand on this? Is it going to be a hard no from them? And he obviously can't give us but so much of an endorsement, but he was happy to say that Cape Hatteras National Seashore remains committed to continuing discussions with local communities and partners on strategies to mitigate the impacts of erosion, including shoreline stabilization on adjacent lands, transportation corridors, and other infrastructure. So what we're feeling and what we're hoping to relay is that it seems like the right people are on board right now, and maybe the time of saying, it's not going to happen, it's illegal, these people aren't going to do it. Maybe it's time to just take a fresh start and go, but how can we get this done?
Okay. What we have up here, since our presentation in Wilmington, we got the CSE report. I, you know, I've been, once, all this started with the FUDs, the jetty thing was a topic from day one. Everybody there told me you needed to fix the jetties. I didn't even want to think about it. I wanted to deal with what we were dealing with, it was as far as the pollution, and if the opportunity presented itself, then we would kind of shift focus. With now our legal representation in DC, he is committed to the jetties. We, you know, so on a federal level, we have that, and, and then after getting the CSE report from 2013, there was just some sentences in there that after reading the report, we were just kind of blown away. So I'm going to read just two of them. And the report, we will be, we'll, we'll send this over later, I guess, to everybody, so you guys can read it for yourself. It, it is quite long, but, all right. Initially, the Hatteras Groins are impermeable, but with time, severe corrosion of the piles allowed sand to leak through the gaps, reducing their trapping capacity. Thus, the effectiveness of the groins has diminished over time, accounting for some upcoast losses. Rehabilitation of the groin would serve to reduce the upcoat loss rate and restoring trapping capacity for the benefit of the Village of Buxton. Whereas the removal of the groins, by comparison, would accelerate erosion of the shoreline salient, salient is the term for bulge, and lead to a straightening of the coast between the Village of Buxton at Cape Point at the expense of existing oceanfront properties. So what Brett and Jeff have been saying all along, science has confirmed. I, I would, you know, and that's just one sentence. And here's another one that was a pretty good one. And this is, uh, this was the Army Corps of Engineers in 1999. With the Lighthouse now situated 1,600 feet inward of the beach, shoreline protection measures for the structure are no longer needed. However, it is apparent, it is apparent that the groins continue to hold a major section of the Village of Buxton shoreline in place. Their influence extends to Highway 12 immediately north of the Village motels. So, I mean, I don't even, what, what do you say about the report that's 12 years old? The whole report's pretty damning. And if we don't do something, if we just didn't bring this up, I, I just, you know, we appreciate Mr. Rob moving up the beach nourishment to 2026, but we got a, we got 18 months. We got the BCA, we have representation at the federal level. You know, we can get ahold of Doug Berman, I can have conversations with Lee Zeldin, the new chief of the EPA. You know, we've been working alongside the Coastal Federation with the SELCA. I mean, why not bring all these, everybody together right now and really take a look at a variance on the, on the camera permit to replace the jetties? And that's, you know?
Guys, I was going to ask you to kind of summarize. You've covered a lot of ground.
Yeah.
We went surfing, we've had jetties, we've had corrosion, we've had accretion, we've had salience. If you could boil this down to, I am in charge, I'm the king, I have all power, what would you do? Would you replace the jetties? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm trying to ferret out.
I've heard two things prior to this last one, and that's fix the jetties before the beach nourishment, before 2026, and also ask for variances to fix the jetties. Those are two requests.
Is that it?
Those are two, and he's just brought up a third.
What's his third?
Third is coming together, all of us getting together and discussing what he, what he just went through. Am I right, Brian? Am I on, am I on target?
No, absolutely. I mean, we're real worried about the ante. Obviously, you know, as we dove into this, and I, you know, I talked to Rick Corbett, we've met with Coastal Science Engineering Program at UNC Wilmington, from Duke, NC State. I mean, we've done the due diligence on all of this, and we're not hearing a no from anybody.
How many jetties are you talking about?
We don't know, Mr. Ross. It's not.
And that's the thing is.
We're not coastal engineers.
If not ours to know.
Bobby can address.
So we've got a lot of stuff.
It's a lot.
So I'm trying to sort it out.
Let me try to be a little more methodical. The jetties, everything they told you about the jetties working is true. Our engineers have told us that as well. We've been to the Coastal Resources Commission more than once, trying to find a way to repair those jetties, and have been turned down at each occasion because.
The Coastal Resources Commission has turned us down repeatedly. Am I hearing that correctly?
The Coastal Area Management Act doesn't allow hardened structures on the beach. And the jetties that have been built in North Carolina recently were done under special legislation for inlet management areas where there's an inlet, and we don't have an inlet there, so we don't fall, and they only allowed six. And so we don't fall under that legislation. And so for us to get a permit from the state, it's not a federal issue with the permits, it's a state issue, we'd have to go to the Coastal Resources Commission, we'd have to go to the legislature and get either, and get the legislation changed to allow that, or we'd have to try to figure a way to repair those under the current legislation that's there.
That's where I was going to go, repairing what's there.
And we have tried that on several occasions and have been told that we don't meet the criteria. So what we have done recently is we've asked our engineers to go in and look at those jetties in more detail, find out what the underwater structures are. I'm not going to go into the details, but there's a rule called the 50% rule, and if you can meet the conditions of that 50% rule, you can compare. And so what we're asking them to do, which hasn't been done yet, was to take the full length and run of the jetty, see what's under the water, what's above the water, see if there's a way to make this and shoehorn it into that 50% rule. If there is, then we're at a place where it's a permissible project through the Coastal Resources Commission, and then the question then becomes, you know, is. And then the question then becomes, you know, is the Park Service going to give us the permits that we would have to have to do that, even if the Coastal Resources Commission approved it? The answer is much like they told you. We've talked with the Park Service on a number of occasions. They recognize that access to their lighthouse and access to their park is dependent on Highway 12. They also recognize the erosion rate that's there, and they recognize that the damage that the jetties have done on the downdrift side have already been done. And in theory, adding a jetty now or repairing that jetty won't do any more damage to the park than has already been done. And so we believe, again, this is general, that we have a good argument with the Park Service to move that forward as well. And so whether we can get all of that done in confluence with the, the nourishment project that's coming out in '27, that would be ambitious, because we've got everything going wide open to try to get the permits to put the sand on the beach. And the earliest we can do is '26.
Twenty-six.
In '26. Doing everything possible to speed it up and having all the agencies working with us to speed it up. To start from scratch with the groins and get them done in a year is very unlikely. But it doesn't mean that we stop, and it doesn't mean that they don't need to be done.
The CRC, there are two ways they can be looking at this with us. One, we hear you, we support you, let's find a way to get the exception in. Two, we don't like you, and we're going to use every aspect of this law to stop you and block you. Do we know which side the CRC is coming along?
They've been directly on the fence. This is what the rule says. To meet this, you got to follow those rules. If you can meet them, you can do it. If you can't, you can't.
Well, yeah, we're not getting the, yes, let's find a way to do it together. It's, that's it, forget it.
At the same time that this is all going on, we have been talking with the CRC and some of the leaders that I have about how do we get a discussion going about other tools rather than just straight beach nourishment to protect beaches, not just in Dare County, but in North Carolina? And, you know, there's all kinds of stuff out there, but they all involve some kind of a hardened structure or some kind of a structure doing certain things, and none of that stuff is allowed. The first step, for the first time at the CRAC meeting that's coming up in February, there's a firm coming in to present one of those kinds of structures and trying to begin that conversation in the coastal communities where we can start thinking about that. Where that will lead, whether that's got political backing in Raleigh, what will happen out of that, I don't know. But if we never have the conversation, we'll never know the answer to those questions. And so that conversation is beginning as well.
I get a sense that these four good folks are preaching to the choir, that we're all in the boat with you. Am I?
Sort of. We just, the choir seems to have a leg up on getting these conversations started, and that's what we're asking.
No, by the choir, I'm talking seven people sitting here.
As am I. Yes. You're the choir.
Okay.
But you have a seat at the table that we might not. So we're, we're just asking if it's time for these conversations to start happening. Let's start happening. See, Brett, what do you want to say?
And acknowledging the 50% rule to the, to the permit. On a jetty that's 50 years old, the county or state or whoever waited 45 years to see if it was viable and there was 50% to repair. There, there has been 20 some years of time to do that prior. And I would also argue as far as timing on building jetties and, and times with the nourishment, you would, I would argue for starters, you would only need at least one to help, and then you could work on the others on the backside. Because, because that's, that's what we, that's what we've seen. There hasn't, there's really only been one for about 10 years. The others have been gone. There, there hasn't been anything there to hold sand for, for a long time. It was really just the one. And again, the hole started about 10 years ago and that, and they were exasperated from 20, 2021 is when new sections started falling down and then into '22 and '23. We haven't, we've lost little bits and stuff, but mostly the holes are getting bigger. But, so it's, it's proof that that one, and really only even part of that one helped us up until the last five years.
And coastal studies, they're telling us, do we need one, do we need three?
I'm not saying only do one, I'm just saying you can start with one.
What we're trying to do is figure out what we can do to increase the life of that project, because if we can hold those projects in place five to seven years, that's all we need, because we've got funding in place to do the nourishment on five to seven year intervals. And so we can do that. And if a 50% rule means we only have to do a portion of those three jetties, then that gets us closer to 50% of the overall value, and that's what they're trying to work at now. If they come in and say you need more than one jetty to make it work, then we've got to look at that too. And we haven't talked about funding any of that yet, so, you know, that becomes yet another issue. So again, we hear you, we, this isn't something that no one's acting on and nobody's doing anything. But again, if we're expecting to have a jetty in place by the '26 nourishment project, that's unlikely.
I will say, you know, the 50% rule, I think it's just a feeble attempt by the state. They threw us a bone in 2017. I mean, no kidding. They maintained the jetties up pretty much every two years, up to 1997, and then 20 years, you know, 20 years later, you going to say, you guys, you know, we can't repair them? They moved the lighthouse and they forgot about the jetties, is what happened. They waited 20 years from '97 to 2017 to do a study of the 50% rule. I, I mean, we all live there, you know? I just, things rust. To wait 20 years for repair, it's, it's almost laughable. And I, I just think it's a very invalid argument on the state's part. I think it's pretty irresponsible of them to wait 20 years, especially with the 2013 report we have that pretty much laid out that Buxton water, the Village of Buxton's doomed if the, if the jetties collapse. And we're, we're almost there now. So, and then on top of it, you got a FUD site, so.
And the government originally put in those jetties without asking the town or whatever, they just kind of did it. Jetties cause a scouring. If the jetties are to go away or to be taken out, the, the, the report says the oceanfront will realign, but it's going to realign with the scalloped out part, not, you know what I mean? We're going to lose the entire oceanfront of Buxton. And that is through no fault of our own. We didn't put the jetties in, we, you know, we'd had no say in it. It was just done. And Hatters Island has been there for, my brother's lead archaeologist on the island, he finds stuff from BC era all the time. So Hatters Island has been there for a long, long time. It's kind of like the mouth of a river, you know? The river delta grows. Hatters Island has two of the world's largest rivers, Labrador and the Gulf Stream collide where we are. We're a natural sand deposit. To watch us erode is manmade intervention. And these jetties, you know, they've already been done. They need to be repaired, because if they're not, we're going to lose all of Buxton, we're going to lose, you know, Frisco, Hatters, we're going to lose Highway 12. It's just, it's irresponsible to not do anything about it. And I know that we've been asked about it, because we have literature from the old civic associations from 40 years ago asking for these things. So this is not a new issue.
And that argument has not generated any movement?
Not until we picked it up again.
No, no, I'm talking, you've, you've talked now. Why aren't we doing it now? As you explained, it's not going to happen quickly. And I'm hearing, you know.
There's been no movement at the state level for removal or change or modification to the hardened structure ban.
Would that be legislative or would that be CAMA and CRC?
That'd be legislative.
Legislative, okay. Thank you.
And Brian, listen, we're, I think you know we're on your side.
Yeah.
I mean, I was in DC when y'all were having the meeting, talking to the legislature about the Buxton site. We're open to, to doing this immediately and getting in front of our legislators with all three of those issues that you've just brought up to us today. And I'm, I'm open to do this sooner rather than later. I'm, as soon as we can get in front of them, we'll make a trip to Raleigh and, and to DC as well to try to, try to get some help there. But, you know, I, I couldn't agree with you more. If there's others out there that's gotten variances, why can't we? And, and, and we need to push that hard. And then bringing everybody together to see if we can come to some kind of agreement to make things happen.
I have a question. You all said variant, I don't make sure we're using our terminology. Can you tell me where they got a variance to put in a jetty? I'm not aware of a variance.
Not a, a jetty. I'm, the six hardened structure exclusions that you mentioned, Ocean Isle.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was all, that wasn't a variance. That was legislation that specifically allowed those.
Okay. Okay. Well, same thing. Yeah. Yeah. If them, why not us? You said it right here.
And we don't, you know, the big thing is with, with the CAMA laws, we understand how they cause a scalloping on the south end and north end and, you know, we understand Redanthi, there, it, we're fixing what's already in place. You know, we don't want to see jetties across Hatters by any means. And I will say that, you guys all know John Hooper very well.
Yep.
He was the commissioner during the time, helped the lighthouse move. He's in Florida right now. He wanted to be here today with us. So he would love to help this cause, and I told him I was going to pull him out of retirement. He, he wasn't really too happy about it, but he's willing to get involved in this. He would like to speak with you guys.
We'll take all the help we can get.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all we're asking for.
We don't mean to sound combative. We're here because we believe that y'all will help us, otherwise we wouldn't be here. So thank you very, very much. I, you know.
Bobby, I got a question. So we talked about the 50% rule, products on hardened structures, 50% damage unless we can't do anything. Are they going to take in consideration the 20 foot that's below sand that they put the structure down on those jetties?
That's, that's exactly what we hope our argument is going to be, because I think what they have done in the past is when they calculated that, they looked at the surface. We've asked the engineers to take those things into account, do the calculation of what's left of the overall depth, not from the top to the bottom of the pile that's in the sand, see where that comes in. And then assuming that comes in favorable, we can go back and argue, whoa, you, you haven't examined the full jetty. The jetty is more than just what you can see, and, and at 50%, we still come in with that requirement. If we can do that, then that's a, sort of an easy entree into doing that repair.
Yeah, and it goes into the dune line too. We don't think their math is mathing on that. We're with you guys.
And so when, when we going to hear about from the engineers on that?
They're doing the work now. I don't know, Dave, do you?
They're working on the FEMA stuff, just trying to get it out today.
We, we tasked them with that project back in the fall, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know where they are in the process.
Okay. Because that's, that's the first thing we, we got to dig, for sure.
Thank you, guys. I got to go back to work.
That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Yeah, thanks for your time. We appreciate you guys. You guys, as far as I'm concerned, you're the only government I have any faith in right now. You know, I don't think Raleigh's going to help us out for two months. You know, I think they're going to have to get checkmated and all this. And I, I just, the 2017, the 50% rule after 20 years of not maintaining them, I just, it's pretty laughable. I.
And not seeing what's underwater or buried in the beach, you know? Only looking at what you can see, it's kind of silly.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
Thanks, y'all. Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item 10 on the agenda. This is a presentation from the Older Adult Services Advisory Council to present their annual report, and Maggie Dennis is here for that.
Good morning, May. Thanks for being.
Good morning, y'all. I'm like blown away by that presentation. It was really good. So, good morning. I'm Maggie Dennis. I am the chairperson for the Dare County Older Adult Advisory Board, and I'm here to present our annual review. But firstly, on behalf of the advisory board and its members, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Creef as our new commissioner representative, and also extend a welcome to our newly appointed North Carolina Tar Heel Delegate Representative Jennifer Tolbert, which I think y'all are doing later today, sure. I am honored to be the alternate to that legislative position. So we look forward to having strong advocates for our older adult population. A brief reminder about our advisory board. It is made up of 11 rotating members, and we have been meeting since the 80s, and since 2022, we have been able to rotate through the different centers and meet there. And this has allowed us to see firsthand the centers, their accomplishments and their needs. These centers are helping seniors remain independent, prevent isolation, promote healthy, active living, and we base our recommendations on these visits and inputs with the older adult community. Each facility continues to offer active living programs. Our programs, clubs for all interests are popular. All centers are dementia friendly and are holding Aging Well Series of classes, and the centers continue with caregiver and senior programming. Our most active age group that utilizes each of these centers is vast, at ages 60 to 85. I'm sorry, take that back, 60 to 79. We are especially seeing in the Thomas A. Baum Senior Center, which is in Kill Devil Hills, a growth in population. We judge this by the fullness of our centers, the programming, and the wait lists for these programs. The Baum Senior Membership has grown, and the numbers last year were 750 members and adding another 639 for 2024. The increase in member check-ins for events or new activities grew 48.6% since 2023. Our older adult participants are greatly outnumbered, greatly outnumbered their under 55-year-old participants in all activities, including fitness. The Fezzin Center serves 722 participants in a variety of older adult activities. Their fitness classes and the pickleball participation has an average of 430 participants a week. The Virginia Tillet Center has approximately 1,716 active members in 2024, and 1,118 of them are aged 55 to 85. That's a nice range right there that it's being used. And with the Fezzin and the Virginia Tillet Community Center as multi-generational centers, we continue to focus on updating where needed for the older adult community. We hear from many that they are not aware that at 55 years young, they are able to participate at center offerings. Many persons are still working full-time at this age and has been asked to have evening or weekend offerings of classes and events. We understand staffing is an issue and the key to any change. One idea is to maybe stagger staff hours or to hire a part-time person as a solution if the need is there. This would be mostly for the Baum Center, as the Virginia Tillet Center is usually open till 7:00 PM most days. The improvements requested last year for the Baum Senior Center are continuing. The much-needed bathroom renovation was completed, exterior repairs, decking, roofing, paint were updated, and the Baum Senior Center parking lot is still in need of attention, flooding, marking, and road repair. The other thing that came up too, is they had a review, is self-locking doors, because we have doors that are, people can walk in, they don't go through the main door. And so there was a recommendation that we get self-locking doors, that people can go out, but they can't come in, they're required to go through the, the main door. So that's another need that's there. Better access parking, we're asking for better access parking for the elderly at the Fezzin Center. We encourage and continue the updates on these facilities and the surrounding grounds. We would also like to recommend that the Baum and Fezzin Centers gain additional heated square footage to support the growing population using the centers. The Fezzin does not have a common area, seating, or places for older adults to congregate. Consideration for additional space to accommodate special and recurring events would be helpful. Did you know that the average senior center provides an access to 25 daily services, either onsite or through information and assistance? That that was a lot of services, and that's pretty awesome. Dare County is very good about that. The additional square footage recommendation would also allow for more offering of classes and the ability to have room for the existing classes, so wait lists are diminished due to the lack of room. I myself have been waiting a year to try to get into a watercolor class, and because the class size is so limited, the area they have it in, you can't really get anybody new in there. Moving ahead, we are happy to welcome the newly formed Baum Senior Center Advisory Board with Urban Bateman as our commissioner representative, and again, Jennifer Tolbert, who is our new North Carolina Senior State Legislative Rent, as the first chairperson. We know this combination will keep the Baum Center on the road to acquiring Dare County's second senior center of excellence, joining our sister center, the Virginia Tillet Community Center. We also encourage support for Dare County to hold a symposium on the state of older adults, as our last conference was in 2018. That was seven years ago. This would be a great outreach program for the public and professionals, as our retirement aged community is always growing. And we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge our amazing senior athletes and artists who participated in the 36 local senior games. participated in the 36 local senior games. There was a 25% increase with 50% of the participants new to the game. We had 64 athletes that moved on to state finals, and 38 of them moved on to nationals. That means they are going to be competing against other states in this country. Hatteras Island was especially represented in the senior games with the cheer squad, the Fabulous Phantoms, and they won a bronze at the state finals. So all the centers are working together on the 2025 senior games, and we are anticipating an increase to approximately 350 to 400 participants this year. We encourage our commissioners, their families and their friends, if you are 50 years of age or better, to participate as individual or group athletes. And don't forget the civil, silver, I have such a hard time with that one, silver arts. They are artisans, performers, and craftsmen's who participate. We also extend an invitation to you, our local representatives, to acknowledge our seniors by attending our opening ceremony being held on April 28, 2025. And on behalf of the Older Adult Advisory Board, we express our thanks for your continued support and the interest in our older adult community. Any questions?
Any questions to Maggie? Thank you so much, Meg. You did great work.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Chairman, that brings us to item 11. This is the Dare County Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. We have Mike Norris and Nate, I'm going to say it wrong, Halabuka here to make that presentation. One thing, just for the benefit of the public, and I'm sure they're going to reiterate it, as they make this presentation, they're going to present to you the data that they received. We need to understand that the data, or the requests, or the input from the people is not the priority list of what we need to do, and our priorities are going to be based on that information, it's going to be on the availability of resources, of land, of facilities, of money, and all those things. And so I don't want anybody to look at this and say, you know, this many percent of the people wanted this thing, and you're not doing it well. We might not be able, you know, to build an Olympic-sized swimming pool somewhere that, that, so we've got to come back later and prioritize what we're going to do, again, based on this report, but also based on land, based on dollars, based on other factors that would determine your long-term priorities of how you spend your money. So with that said, I'll turn it back over to you.
Welcome, Spencer. Good morning. I just wanted to introduce Mike, Mike Norris and Nate Halabuka from McGill. We've been working on this needs assessment since about September, August, and they've been working hard on looking at all of our facilities, doing, we did a countywide survey, and we had eight focus groups, and they did a tour of all of our facilities, and here they are just to present a summary of their findings.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. Perhaps I could make this as brief and, and hit the highlights of this assessment as we go through this, and Nate's going to come up and chime in with us also, but. Let's see. Oh, there we go. All right. As Manager mentioned, this is an evaluation of, of just the county facilities. This doesn't include some of the local, the other local communities with Naggs Head, Northern Beaches, and, and other providers, but just focusing on, on Dare County facilities. A little bit too far. Just to give you a little bit of what we want to cover, who we are, what facilities we have, I want to touch on the great community engagement we had from the community, as well as benchmarking ourselves with other communities, and the findings and next steps. This, this is a discovery, understanding of, of who we are, what the people are saying, but also to serve, more importantly, as a guide for how to move forward. This summary, if you've had a chance to look at it, we have several sections there, addressing most of the things I've already mentioned, but more importantly, the community engagement and needs analysis. Dare County is very unique. In fact, it's, it's more unique than in, compared to, to any other county in the state. Some of those unique qualities, we all know, the, the coastline, the median age of 48 compared to the state average of around 38. Of course, the seasonal population grows tremendously during the, during the summertime, and then we expect some moderate growth over the next 10 years. The, the Parks Department is divided in three main divisions, as you know, and some of our, our survey is geared upon that, is restructuring how, in reflection of that community, of those communities and the divisions. A little let Nate quickly touch on some of the important parts of the county parks. Just go on, we're going to just stand up here.
All right. So as, as Mike alluded to, one of the, some of the things that we looked at is not only did a, a countywide survey, but we wanted to make sure that we broke it down into those different service districts or those divisions, so that we could understand not only overarching county need, but also what the specific telltale signs were within the needs within the community. We use that data, and then we also benchmarked it against, there's the National Recreation and Park Association that has benchmarks that you can use, that, that compares you to other like and similar-sized communities across the country. We also did some steps to where we looked at you in comparison to other communities across North Carolina. So what we have here is we looked not only at your 17 parks, but we looked at the acreage within it. The key part that I want you to take away here is that it's in terms of strict acreage in that national benchmark, Dare County does not have a lot of acreage. And that's not to cause judgment, that's simply based on the, you know, the geographic makeup that the county has. But that's to just put that in that larger framework. You don't, as far as park acreage go, have a large system.
We did several community engagement activities. Over 300 folks attended these meetings. I would, and it was pretty amazing, I would say Dare County is the most active community we've ever worked with out of several dozen communities across the state, in other, other states, actually. You have more folks that are doing more things, different activities of all ages, and they're very vocal about it. They're, they're wanting more, to sum that up. Other engagement, the way we, we did that is Nate mentioned, the survey questionnaire, we got nearly, probably around 10% of your population, which is, is pretty staggering. That's a great survey response. And, and then we also did the focus group meetings, which dived into a deeper community groups, whether it's school system, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, focuses on different parts of recreation throughout the county. In the in-person public engagement, what we had was an activity with a visual preference board. We had 32 different types of amenities. From that, we, we found the top 10 amenities from that in-person exercise. You can see that list, I'm not going to go through all of those, but it, it reflects the general cross-section of adventure play, gymnasium, pickleball, a variety of indoor as well as outdoor recreation were, were the top 10.
And if I can quickly add to that, whenever we do these public input meetings and we use those visual preference boards, similar to the way that we took your survey and broke it up and, and have a way to parse out the different divisions, we did the same thing with those visual preference boards, so that we can understand and have those meetings in different locations, so that we can also have that reflect those different geographic areas within the county.
Just to touch on the survey, we did have a good cross-section across the county as far as representative of the, the Northern Beaches, Roanoke Island, Hatteras Island was a, represented a good cross-section of those communities. Nate, go ahead and talk to me.
Sure. So here's, the, the biggest thing that we want to talk about here is you, is important for us to understand what your public has or they have as far as needs are, but part of that was also going out and evaluating your facilities. And the good thing is that you, your facilities are, you know, they're being used well, they're in good shape, but they're also being pushed pretty hard, as hard as they can. And that's because of population increases, that's happening not only in Dare County, but it's happening across the state, as the state continues to attract more and more people. So I want to take here just a second, I want to pull, this is a snapshot at the survey, so what you'll see on the left-hand column is how this, how the responses looked within the countywide response rate, those are your top rankings within the survey. And then the other pieces that we have here are just the different divisions, and the, I use pickleball as the example here. What I want you to see is that there's variations across the county. So whereas pickleball ranked seventh across the whole county, in, in some areas, like in Hatteras, it ranked number two, and others in Northern Beach area, it ranked number, I think is number six, and other communities like, you know, the Roanoke, the mainland area, it's ranking near the bottom. But if we look at other recreation amenities, it sees a flip. And what's important here is to see that there's different segments of interests that are represented across your county. The other thing that we asked is, and I want you to see this as a tribute, that y'all are doing a good job, that they, we asked the survey participants, what do you thought about the current investment level into the park system? And they're saying that, you know, it's, it's a little bit low. Whenever we asked, hey, where does it need to be, it moved higher up towards the maintain and grow slowly, or maintain and grow quickly. I don't want you to take that as a negative thing. We're going to get to here in a second, program participation and park usage. What it's showing is that you have attendees that really enjoy your parks, and they want to see more of it. They, they love your facilities and they want to see more of it. It's more affirmation than a judgment over the current investment levels. The, the other thing is, Mike pointed, this is a multimodal process, I think he's touched on this a little bit, that those focus groups really give us key details that maybe not come out through the surveys of the public input, so that was taken into consideration. We've talked about program participation.
I can read them and keep up.
Okay, sure.
You go back one.
Yes, sir. So, and what we do as part of the focus group meetings is to look at different segments of the population, so whether it be athletics, or, you know, the aging population, or school age, or so on, so forth, we're taking that and gleaning more in-depth information from those focus groups that are, that are part of that. The next piece that I want to shift on to is we did a program evaluation, and the biggest thing that I want you to see with this is that your park, your park programs are trending upward, you're having more and more usage of those programs. At the same time, generally, your facilities have stayed about the same. That's, those program increases are happening both seasonally, no matter what season it is that, that programs are attending, those, those programs are increasing, as well as those different geographic divisions, those programs are also increasing. What, the big picture that I want you to take away is that across the board, patronization of your parks and programs are increasing. All right, so this is, this is one, and I want to pause here for a second. As I mentioned, we take a look at a benchmark, we're comparing your community across national benchmarks, which means that we're going to look at how many facilities you essentially have, and then what, how many facilities communities across the country of the similar size have. And then we see, you know, are you above or below certain type of amenities? This helps us see, gauge, you know, do you need more facilities in certain areas, or do you need to go below? A couple key factors is, right now, some activities such as pickleball, and pickleball really is, is, y'all are doing a good job of meeting that as far as we're looking at the benchmarking piece. It's, you're meeting above benchmark levels in that area. Other areas are above benchmark, but maybe not as far, which is softball and baseball and, and indoor recreation facilities. The other piece, I'm sorry, and then the other piece is that there's also areas where there's need that are expressed, and this is just purely comparing you across your benchmark. So this study went into comparing you within that. And as we go into the, the, the next piece, and I don't want to dwell on this a lot, what we don't want to look at whenever we're looking at this is, these are your level of services. And this is more or less saying, here's how you stack up in each one of these more or less divisions, and these are expressed needs. Now, there's different ways, and, and whenever you get into this comprehensive planning process, there's multiple ways to meet these needs. It may mean armoring a system that's out there, meaning that if you have athletic fields, you may get more use out of an athletic field if it's a synthetic turf, therefore, you're able to eat more, you're able to meet more of that need. It may mean that you do need to build more facilities. It may mean that if you have somebody that, or a program area that has low interest in a particular area, that that area needs to be repurposed towards something else. So what this is doing you is just giving you a snapshot in each one of these areas and across the system of how you're stacking up right now. The next piece is how you start to meet those needs. This is giving you, again, we did this for all the different divisions. So next up.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there something that we need to take away from each division, or were they all uniform and homogeneous?
No, no, you're absolutely, I don't know whether or not you're a genius or not, but yes, there are divisional differences within it.
That's what I was hoping you'd point out.
Yeah, there are divisional differences, and if you give me a second, I'll get, I'll hit some of the high points of it. So first up, across the entire system, you have a general need in playgrounds and accessible spaces. Those are really important things. The, the other thing is that aquatics came across as a high level of need across the entire area. How about you're going to, how you're going to go about meeting that is important. In the Hatteras Division, there, there is some expressed need with it for multipurpose fields, and again, that's not to say that you need to build more, that may mean armoring different things, some additional needs, a smaller amount, but additional needs for pickleball, and that can be made either pickleball slash tennis, or pickleball by itself. Again, we've mentioned the playgrounds and the accessible playgrounds, and then community indoor spaces, maybe not with gyms, that, that came out. Next up, if we look at the, the Northern Division, we see only medium interest in baseball and softball, multipurpose things again, multipurpose fields again.
We need to advance a slide, I'm still on Hatteras.
Okay.
Thank you. Nope, nope, nope. There we go.
Sorry about that. The, the next thing is, if we're looking at the Northern Beach Division, and this is, you know, I, I think there was a lot of foresight into, to pickleball need about how you're actually going to address that, but there was expressed need in pickleball within the Northern Division. This was the area to where it's, there's a heavy need for indoor recreation, and that, that is generally across the entire system. There's less of a need for athletic-based, outdoor-type fields, and again, we see the, the need for accessible facilities and playgrounds. If we look at the last division within the Roanoke, the mainland division, this is where you have typically a lot more need for outdoor recreation, your athletic fields, your multipurpose fields, less of a need for pickleball and those type of things, but you have more younger families, more working-class families, that are really looking for, you know, programs that are suited towards younger families. And I want to pause there, I know that I went through that quickly, and this is just to, to touch on the surface of looking at the different divisional needs. I want to pause there for a second. And again, I know that we went through that quickly. Next up, we also looked at how you stack up within, we compare your, your current allotment, your budgetary allotment on a per capita rate to other communities in a benchmark level. And you do have, I, I want to point this out, you do have good investment into Parks and Recreation, but when we look at it across the entire national board with similar type communities, you're slightly below the median average, or slightly below the median. But whenever we look down and compare you against other North Carolina communities, like Mike said, you're, you're, you're in, almost in a different class. You, we can't really put you in line with similar-sized population areas, just because of the, the quality of life expectations in the area, so your, your per capita is spending above there. If we look at similar Beach area communities, your spending rate is generally above those. That's to say that you're unique. Whenever we look at you on a benchmark level, you're below median, whenever we compare you with state comparisons, you're outstripping them. So you almost, you're almost in a class of your own, and this is important. You're not just a normal county. I've had the chance, I've had the chance to work across, communities across, all across North Carolina and across the country. You, you're, you have not only national draw, but international draw. You're more in line with some of those national communities. So what I wanted to put up here, and this is just a quick snapshot to show you, that your population, your median household income, and your, your home values are more in line with a place like Hilton Head, South Carolina. And that's important.
Do you believe that value on the housing prices?
No, so, so this, that's an important point.
Let's correct that.
These are important because these were drawn from census report data, so it gives us a snapshot. I honestly believe that both Hilton Head and Dare County's median household values are much higher than what was reported from census, and this is, this is the snapshot that we could get from census. The point, the point is, I think y'all are probably, from what we heard, you're probably north of that.
Correct.
Yeah. And, and I think it's probably likely going to increase that. The thing is that if you have somebody that is shopping for a nationally-recognized or internationally-recognized place to live, work, and play, you're in a class, in a much higher class than many other local governments in North Carolina.
Could you go back to the previous slide again, please?
Sure.
Thank you. On the very far right, it says per capita, Parks and Recreation amount with a bunch of stars, $3,004,000, Dare County.
That's, that is from your, your budget figures from 2024, 2025.
Okay. Advance one slide.
What's that?
Forward one slide, please.
Yes, sir.
2024 Parks and Rec investment, $9.1 million. I just saw 3.4.
That's Hilton Head.
That's from Hilton Head. So that, what?
Thank you, thank you.
No problem. And see, that's the thing, is we're still in the needs assessment, and that's to show you, we can't tell you yet what needs to be invested, but it's showing you what that comparable community, comparable in the sense that y'all are hallmark in the entire country.
So we're one-third where we would be comparable to Hilton Head.
Well, that's to be determined. Like, if we're, you're building a community.
If you are where you are right now.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, we're three, they're at nine. Or one-third.
And that's going to be important, is you're building quality of life with your recreation programs, and this is to show you what a potential competitor's investing in, and that's not to be judgmental, it's just, the way that you're going to invest in your Parks and Recreation facilities to come are going to shape what this community looks like. So, I want to advance here, there's significant research that shows some, that it's not just an investment in your quality of life, but your Parks and Recreation have positive impacts on home values, on economic development, on visitor spending, these are all things that y'all know. Parks and Recreation, and I have to explain this more to communities in different parts of the state, that there's this spectrum that most part, most local governments fall within. On one side, they see Parks and Recreation as an expense. They see, hey, we put money into it like a police department or a fire department, and we get a service out, or we get a Parks and Rec program out, and we get a facility out. On the other side, we see that it, Parks and Recreation is viewed more as an investment. Yeah, we get the parks back, we get the programs back, but it does more than that. It builds our quality of life, it builds our economics, it grows our tourism sector, it does a lot more than that, and it's for you to think, and for you to determine, is Parks and Rec more of an expense, at which point, getting the most bang for your buck is the only bottom line, or is it more of an investment, to where we're shaping the future for children and their grandchildren, and what the community is to look at in the future. So as you're moving forward, those would be, that's something core to look at.
I got one question for you, though. Looking at Parks and Recreation and comparing us to other areas, do those other areas have three very large national parks in their counties?
So, that's an important piece, is every different community is different. If we flash back about fifteen years, and the National Recreation Parks Association used recreation standards, they would say, hey, for a population of this size, you need X number of parks, you need X number of playgrounds, you need X number of aquatics facilities. And they've moved away from that, and moved towards the local level of standard, because you have national seashore, you have state parks, so you have municipal factors, or you have initial parks. So whenever we're actually, if we move into the recommendations phase, taking into account not just what you have, but what is here is national assets, as well as municipal assets, will all factor into that. But for these numbers themselves, for this level of service, it is more the, kind of the quantitative piece. Any other questions? All right, so, one thing is, I used to manage the state's Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and Land and Water Conservation Fund. And why that, what that helped me see is, not only did I get to see a lot of plans come across the entire state, whenever you take something to a funding board, it's important that there's local investment into it. So many local governments fall into the trap of, hey, if we want to get something done, let's go after grant funding and leave it at that. Those investment boards are really in looking for, those grant advisory boards are really looking for you to have local investment into it, and it helps to show what type of community you're trying to build, and that you have a stake in the game. And with that, I just want to, I'll turn it back to Mike to talk about, you know, what is, what would be a natural next step?
So Nate covered a good analysis of benchmarking us with other communities, what we feel like we're in more demand of facilities, so what's the next steps? We've shared with you the findings of community engagement, the benchmarking. There's, with state grants, they often look for a system-wide plan, looking at our entire system. What you've completed is the Phase One of that, with the Phase Two being, what do we do and how do we do it, as well as when? So if you see some of the next steps here, the recommendations for implementing, and we'll follow the leadership of you of some of your comments, but a lot of times, where's the low-hanging fruit right now? What can we do with what we've got to make it better? And then there's going to be some much larger recommendations of park development or expansion, how does that look? We need to look deeper into that with facilities. Not only that, but programming. You know, we've, Spencer, the Parks and Rec Department has done a great job with what they have, but as Nate mentioned, we've, there's not only more people here, but there's also wanting to do more. So, we're limited with programming with the facilities that we have. As you add, you need to think about staffing, organizational behavior within that, and how do we maintain that? So we can't just build and think it's going to operate with the current staffing, but there's going to be more demand on that. I also think it's really important to look at partnerships with limited availability of land, how we might could partner with some of the other local governments in Dare County, as well as then, what comes first, second, and third, and have a feasible capital improvement plan that's achievable and realistic. We talked about funding programs and that implementation piece. We'll open it up with any questions or comments you might have.
Yeah, I mean, I got a bunch of questions, and I figure now's the best time before we get into another step. You did poll thirty-nine hundred people, correct? That is a very large base group, I'll admit, in your original.
Yeah, so what, if I can go back to, there's two different frames of thought, we did not, there's, we polled the entire county.
Okay. You got thirty-nine hundred responses.
We had an open-based survey, and one of the pitfalls is, if you do a statistically-balled survey, we would have only been able to hear from about three hundred and eighty people across the entire county. And then that leaves everybody else in the county that wants to participate and give feedback, they're kind of left out of it. So yes, it was opened up.
And your benchmarks, I mean, personally, I didn't see a single, another eastern coast county on those benchmarks that you showed. I don't know if you've ever been to Gates County, Chawan County, Pasquantet County, Hertford County, Currituck, Hyde, Terrell, I'm pretty sure they're all spending less money on Parks and Recreation or departments than us.
So, that's a good part. So, two different things that I want to parse out. The benchmarking itself comes from National Recreation Park Association, and, so we're benchmarking you against comparably-sized communities, and actually, I had a chance, and I was a regional consultant whenever I worked with NC State, I had a chance to visit a lot of the counties that you mentioned. Your quality of life and your way of life is different than a lot of those inland communities. So whenever we were trying to pair you up against other North Carolina-based communities, it's difficult. If we find those that have similar population bases, they may not be geographically in the area. If we have to try and find a coastal community to compare you with, you're more in line with more of the beach communities than those inland areas, that don't have access to the beach, that don't have national parks, and so on, so forth. So yes, sir, that was taken into consideration.
Just in defense of previous boards, I think that our recreational sites, I mean, they just built a new youth center in Mania. I think they're pretty good, all in all, and at the end of the day, I can poll how many people want higher taxes or lower taxes, what helps people's quality of life better. I mean, you could factor in a number of different things into these surveys and all, so I just want to make the board's case that they have done an excellent job in the past with their rec departments. That's it for me.
Anybody else have any questions of our folks? I know we're gonna take this report, and our first thing is for our CIP to look into it and come up, incorporate this, and if you go all the way down to your Phase Two, once again, we're gonna look at all that from the CIP point and make some recommendations to the board.
All right. Thank you.
We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me ask you something on those funding opportunities. If you'll back up, if you'll back up the slide prior to that.
Sure.
Are they matching funds?
Yes, sir. So I've managed two of these personally, both of them require a match, most of them around fifty-fifty match. There's some other ones, the accessibility for parks grants around, it's a twenty percent match. And, like I said, they're looking for, you can't even apply for them without having some skin in the game, and they, they're going to look towards that.
Is there a, is there a specific time frame of applying for these funds?
Yeah, so different ones have different timelines. So, one of the grants that come up here shortly, early March, is the accessibility for parks grants. The Parks and Rec Trust Fund, their deadline is May first. The other one on there, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, they typically, it's a federal fund that has three different openings, you'd likely have an opening in August, and then one again in November.
Okay, would you make Spencer and his group aware of those timelines?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one other question along those lines?
Yes, sir.
Some of those grants require you to have a Parks and Rec master plan to be eligible for the grant, and so the second phase of this is to get that master plan. If we're going to meet those May deadlines, can you do it that quickly?
That's a question better for Mike, but to your point, for you to really be competitive for most, if not all, of these grants, you have to have the full comprehensive plan.
Okay. That's good, isn't it?
It's money well spent, the plan is good for those funding bodies for the next ten years, so it's not as, has a one-year shelf life, and I've seen a number of cases, whenever I was managing the grant program, to where communities would get two, three, four, tenfold over on their reinvestment from that particular plan.
And to answer the manager's question, that, as I, we talked about that second phase, this, we just done the assessment of discovery. The assessment basically completes a system-wide plan, which qualifies for the, makes it more achievable for obtaining funding for the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, or most other grants with that system-wide plan. But I think it's really important to understand what do we want to do, and a timeline for those items there, so that when we apply or approach that, we have a methodical approach towards those priorities.
Okay.
I got a question. So, this board takes a proactive approach to this, which we are, what's the timeline that we can start applying for grants and so forth with all this?
You, I would say a natural process to follow is, it's common practice to involve local leadership whenever you're drawing out what those recommendations are. I would say, you know, if we were to try and move towards, I don't know that it's, let me take a step back.
Can I ask you in a different way to help you?
Yeah.
If we came back at our March meeting and approved a contract for you to go to the next phase, and we did that next phase orderly, the way it's supposed to be done, approximately how long does that take? And that'll then put you in the grant cycle for whatever the next grant cycle is?
I generally advise local governments, you've more or less, you don't have the time for like the March grant deadline, or even the May grant deadline. There may be enough time to go with, move forward towards some more of the federal funds that are later on this year, or certainly next year. I would say that this next phase would most likely take between, what do you think, four and six months, which sets you up for more the next fiscal year.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me, that brings another question. Could we apply for a grant for both the state and federal for the same kind of grant?
You can. Yeah, it, there's a timing difference that goes within it, but threading that needle is not easy, but it can be done. I've seen it done, I've seen it done from the other side whenever I was managing them. Typically, it's better to go after the federal grant, get the federal grant in hand, and then go after the state.
Can you use one as a match for the other?
You can. It's difficult, but we could guide you through it.
Well, let me, let me throw this at you. We got a new administration in DC. You see any of these federal funds going away?
So, that's a good question. So, the executive, I was an executive director of a national nonprofit that worked with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, so those funds are not actually appropriated within the normal federal regulations, they actually come out of funds that happen from offshore drilling, so they have been dedicated in perpetuity towards the actual funding body. So it would take federal legislation to remove that funding, which was actually approved under the current administration whenever they were in office the first time. So it is improbable that that funding, that federal funding would be removed.
That is an eye-opener, when you say that it comes out of offshore drilling funded.
Yeah. So what's happening? I don't know how much detail you want me to go into.
No, well, I'm scared to ask.
So there, I'll make this quick. That grant was funded originally back in the sixties because there was an understanding that offshore drilling could have, or does have negative environmental impact, so the grant was set up to help protect land and parks on the actual property.
So the reason I say that is, we go after federal funding, and it's coming from offshore drilling. We've been pretty doggone adamant about being opposed to offshore drilling as a board, I can tell you that, so we won't be looked upon favorably for a grant if it's coming out of those funds.
That is a decision.
To put a bow on this, you all, at the next meeting, we'll come to you with whatever the proposal is and the cost to move forward, you all will make a decision whether we move forward. When we move forward, whenever that process is complete, then we'll start looking at, we got to do two things, we got to look at grant dollars, but we also got to look at what dollars are we going, and we'll be in budget season, so what dollars are we going to budget different than what we're doing now? Because they need that to help us, if we're going to not grow at any, then they need to know that, so that as they're setting our, helping us set our priorities, they know what our resources are.
Absolutely. Well, we've got a CIP this afternoon, so we'll have this discussion.
As part of that second phase, you may, would like to have a commissioner work session to work with us and weigh things out and have suggestions.
Very much so.
And that way, we're not recommending you go after funds that were otherwise.
Yeah, we'll definitely entertain that. Thank you again, gentlemen.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
I promise I won't ask any more questions.
No problem.
Right now.
Yeah, right now.
All right.
That brings us to item twelve on the agenda. This is a presentation from the Dare County Community Housing Task Force, and we have Donna Creef and Malcolm Fearing here for that presentation.
Donna, Malcolm, thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon.
Malcolm, you're under a timeframe today.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
No, I'm just kidding with you.
Yeah, but he's wearing a tie.
Yeah, he's wearing a tie. Goodness gracious.
And a jacket.
He's got a towel.
And dress shoes. I stand up here, and I'm getting this weird feeling of deja vu, like I've been here before dressing you guys.
Yep.
As Mr. Alton said, I'm Donna Creef, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, and I also serve as the Chair of the Dare Community Housing Task Force, and Mr. Fearing is the Vice Chair, and I have several of my Housing Task Force members here who have sat here all morning. If you guys would please stand up, since you've sat here all morning, you probably want the students to stand up anyway. I appreciate all of them coming and sitting here this morning. Chairman Woodard, you're on our task force, Commissioner Alton's on the task force, Skylar serves as the person that organizes our meetings, and she's been invaluable, I'm glad to see she got that award this morning. Thank you guys for being here this morning, and I know you guys have had a long meeting, so I'm going to breeze through this. I'm going to be speaking about the 2024 report that the task force put together, and I am the person standing up here talking about the report, but that report reflects all of the hard work of the task force over the past twelve months or so. The report is entitled Housing for Now and Future Generations. It is, it was adopted by unanimous vote on, at our board meeting in December. Let me get my clicker going here. It summarizes all of the research and the presentations that we heard during our monthly meetings and our subcommittee meetings. It presents statistical information, and I'm going to go over some of that this morning to demonstrate the market conditions and the housing needs of our community. It makes conclusions, it sets tasks for 2025, and I've got the location of the report there, it's available on the Dare County webpage, and I hope that all of you have had a chance to look at it. I do want to talk real briefly about the Our State, Our Homes program. The task force decided to submit an application to that in October, and we were very skeptical that we would even get selected for it. It was a highly competitive process, there was eighty-seven different organizations that submitted applications. There was eighty-seven different organizations that submitted applications, and lo and behold, we did get selected. We are one of fourteen teams. This is a program that's sponsored by the North Carolina University School of Government. Its aim, and this is from their press release, aim is to connect communities with the resources and tools needed to assess and make decisions on how to respond to local housing needs. We have our first in-person meeting this month on February the eighteenth and nineteenth. It's an eighteen-month program. We have to appoint a core team from the task force, and that core team is Mr. Fearing and myself, Andy Garman from the town of Nags Head, Matt Neal from the town of Southern Shores, and Mr. Anthony Fletcher, who is a Hatteras Island resident and a business owner. We are hoping to use the five the 2024 report from the task force as an action plan that that program will require. The important thing to note that this is not costing any of the task force member organizations a penny. Our travel expenses will be paid by UNC School of Government. Part of that is process is we will be receiving $10,000 to use as a pilot project implementation. That project hasn't been identified yet, but I expect that it will be used perhaps in association with the establishment of some sort of nonprofit or other research options that we're doing. So housing is a complicated complicated issue, as you guys know very well. What does what guides it? It's guided by the North Carolina Constitution and the general statutes, the restrictions on how counties and local governments can use those public funds for housing. There's enabling legislation that sometimes gives local governments options and authority to do things in particular. We have one here in Dare County that was used for the teacher housing. That was passed in 2004. And then there's also our geography factors into how we address housing, the presence of public lands. We have a lot of public land here in Dare County, land use regulations, development costs, and community attitudes. So the report is broken down into four components. Housing has to be available housing. There has to be attainable housing. It has to be sustainable, and it has to be acceptable. There has to be a housing inventory, land for housing. The housing needs to be set aside for long-term occupancy. It needs to be attainable. It doesn't need to be what's considered cost burden, and there's a the metric that's used that's thirty percent. You shouldn't be using more than thirty percent of your household income for your housing expenses. Housing needs to be sustainable. Once you get into a home, you need to be able to afford to be able to continue to afford to live there. Yes, sir.
What are the housing expenses that fall under the thirty percent?
The housing expenses are your mortgage, your taxes, your insurance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So that's that doesn't account for all of the other things that you have to pay for in your day-to-day life. So the housing, once you get into it, you have to be able to afford to continue to live there. We all know that insurance costs are going up. The cost to maintain your homes are going up. Our homes have to be resilient. They have to be constructed to meet the natural hazards here, and it needs to be acceptable. It needs to be consistent with zoning, and it needs to be acceptable in terms of the aesthetics and the scale of the housing. I don't know where that's coming from. So some of the statistics here, we have a lot of houses here in Dare County. I talked about the houses have to be available, but we have a lot of houses here, but they're not necessarily dedicated to long-term use. We have approximately 35,000 housing units, fifty-three point fifty-three percent of those are considered as vacant, and vacant being the the second second homes and the vacation rentals. And these numbers are coming from the 2022 American Community Housing Survey. You'll see that I've further broken those numbers down into the different geographic regions. The colors and the numbers in yellow are the numbers that are occupied. Housing tenure, I hear a lot of times people will say, well, Donna, you know, you got to do something about those Airbnbs. Well, that's not not so easily done. Our short-term rentals serve as our primary vacation accommodations versus hotels or motels, as other areas have a higher concentration of hotels and motels. The popularity of the online marketing platforms, the Airbnb or the VRBOs, they have impacted our long-term rentals, but what our research shows is that some property owners use the income from those air those short-term rentals to pay their mortgages. Local governments are not authorized by the North Carolina General Assembly to grant tax adjustments to property owners if they, you know, to incentivize them to use as long-term rentals. And there's also case law that regulates how local governments can regulate those short-term rentals. What we also found in our research and speaking with some of our property managers is that some of those short-term rentals are transitioning back to long-term rentals due to decreased demand. Some household statistics, the median home sales price in 2003 was $325,000, and I'm going to disagree with that number that that gentleman right in front of me had up on his screen of $421,000. I don't know where he was pulling that number from, but my numbers are coming from the Outer Banks Association of Realtors and their median sales price, and this was from reports that I ran in October, was $622,000.
Which is why I stopped them.
Yes.
It was nonsensical to put that up there.
So you'll you'll see that in in twenty in thousand in 2003, it was $325,000. It jumped up in 2020 to 381.5, so that's a seventeen percent increase. But in the four years from 2020 to 2024, there was a sixty-three percent increase. The median household income for Dare County, and this is a 2022 number from, again, the American Community surveys, right at $80,000. Thirty percent that metric that I talked about, thirty percent of that is $23,922. The information released from the Our State, Our Homes program, thirty-one percent of the households in Dare County are considered cost burden, so they're paying more than thirty percent for their household expenses or their housing expenses, not necessarily their household expenses, but their housing expenses. This slide right here breaks down that median household that median sales price by geography. You'll see that dock has the highest price there. They have a lot of big homes up there, a lot of oceanfront. Collington, great place to live, Collington, $517, $500. Collington is one of our largest year-round neighborhoods.
Donica, go back.
Go back.
It's a sea source, Obar.
Right. So so Obar, and their and their their multiple listing service, they have an ability to run all these reports based on the sales data, and so that's where that's coming from.
I'm just skeptical of some of those numbers being lower than.
Lower than?
What's actual?
Well, you have to understand that that they're median numbers, and so you're getting the big oceanfront houses. And your year-round houses, and so they're finding the median, so they're throwing out the lower and the smaller, but you're still getting the median. But I'm going to I'm going to get talk about some of those prices right here. So since we're unincorporated Dare County, that's what you guys focus on. I've broken this down into those median sales prices for Collington, Hatteras Island, Roanoke Island, and the mainland. I've pulled that median sales price, calculated what the monthly payment would be, assuming a six percent interest, okay? Six percent interest, one percent insurance cost, which is probably low. And then the actual tax rate, and you'll see that bottom number there.
What was the mortgage you used in that number, one of the six percent?
It's assuming that you're putting some money down, not maybe not twenty percent. I think it was $10,000 down.
$10,000?
And and you know what?
On a $600,000 home?
Right.
That's never going to work.
Well, in today's world, there's a lot of different financial mortgage situations, and you don't necessarily have to put down $20,000. So this is just an example. It's not going to take care of everything, but it is illustrative of how expensive and how difficult it is to find a house that you can afford to buy. So that fourth line there, you'll see that required household income, that's the number, the household income that is required to buy that median sales price there. So for if you lived in Collington and you were paying that $517,000, your household income would have to be $171,000.
Pause, please.
Yes, sir.
Let's just look at that line. Okay? Everybody see that line? Don't go too fast.
Well, I was trying to.
This is kind of a big payoff punch.
It's it's a it's a huge gap.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you took that pause because there's some folks in the community that say to me, well, Donna, you know, I don't really think that there's a housing problem.
Exactly. All we have to do is recruit orthopedic surgeons, and they can all buy median household.
Right, right. So moving down my chart there, you'll see that the adjusted median household income, and this is that number from the American Community Survey, which is associated with the census, that was a 2022 number, and I applied a four percent cost of living to that annually to get those numbers, and that's broken down again in by geography. You'll see that that number in red is what that median household income equates to what what number what what's the cost of a house does that does that household income actually equal to? So you'll see there in Collington, if your median household income is $82,000, you could afford a $252,000 house. Now, the next line that I have there is listings. I run a report on Thursday before I sent this to Skylar and to see what the lowest cost of the houses is in Collington. It was $472,000.
Pause again.
Yes, sir.
Look at those two lines. This page was one of the most impactful data sheets I've seen in I don't know how long, Donna. That's why I'm saying thank you. And this is. Yes.
And so just just so you know, the report has just Collington and Roanoke Island, and I'm going around this month and speaking to all of our local government partners, and I'm making it specific to their geography so they can see. But since you guys are unincorporated Dare County, I broke this down into your your main points area there. And so you'll see that the corresponding numbers for Hatteras, for Roanoke Island, and for the mainland. And not just to focus on homeownership, I pulled some information together last week on rentals, and there's a different lots of different options. I made sure that I didn't focus just on the single-family homes. The lowest is a two-bedroom, two-bath mobile home on in Mans Harbor for $1,400. You'll see a variety of costs there. Most of them are in the $2,500 range. One of the things that we talked about in our task force is how we have to make this relatable to the community. You know, you throw out the AMIs and all these other acronyms, and we have to make it relatable. And so how do you make that relatable? You talk about salaries and, you know, who who is that? What does that salary and what's that job so that the people in the community know who it is that we're talking about housing here? And they understand it's, you know, it's that person that that comes to get them in the EMT, or it's the person that's serving them their coffee, or it's the person that's sitting next to them in church. I pulled some salary data from the Dare County webpage. There's a first-year teacher salary there. There's some private sector ones. I did pull from the Outer Banks Chamber webpage the average weekly salary, and granted, this was in twenty-four, the second quarter of twenty-four, that's $845. That's the average weekly salary. That's coming, I think, from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. We talk about acceptable options in the report, the options that are consistent with neighborhood patterns, existing architecture and surrounding land uses, accessory dwelling units. That's something that the county has in their ordinance and some of the other local governments. Duplexes and small-scale residential houses. There's been an important change in the North Carolina codes. It used to be that the residential code was just one- and-two-family structures. Now it's expanded to include one, two, three, four family units and is under our is under the residential code and not the commercial code, and that represents a significant cost savings during the construction process. And I asked Noah earlier, when he was sitting back there by me, there's I think he said there's four different projects that's occurring in unincorporated Dare County that's taking advantage of this change in the residential code. Commercial workforce accessory structures, the same concept, that was a as an accessory dwelling unit in residential districts of Dare County, has that included in their ordinance. And then I found it interesting this morning that Mr. Galasa was up here this morning, his representative, asking to build a four-bedroom house on his property to houses employees. The other thing that we've discovered in our research is that there that one of the important tools in housing to make sure that it stays in that long-term tenure and that it's perpetual on that long-term tenure is the use of deed restrictions and and workforce housing or a workforce component. The county requires that for their accessory dwelling units. You guys use that as a tool in your special use permit. The town of Nags had recently adopted multifamily regulations back this fall, and they had a workforce requirement in there as well as a tenure requirement. Moving forward into 2025, the report makes some recommendations and conclusions and recommendations. One of the things that we're going to try to focus on is our further research into additional housing for teachers and local government employees using that 24 legislation that has been used to build houses for teachers in Buxton and Kill Devil Hills. We're going to investigate the establishment of a nonprofit agency and perpetual funding sources that can be used with the nonprofit, investigate development of housing on government-owned land, and complete outreach activities to make AMI and housing needs relatable to residents and property owners. Obar, the Outer Banks Association of Realtors.
What does that mean? The activities to make area median income housing needs relatable to residents and property?
So that when we talk about what that area median income is, what what jobs does that relate to those salary numbers that I showed you so you know?
None of them. The AMI was eighty-one. None of the jobs were close.
Well, we're trying to to make that so that people understand the AMI and how difficult that is and what we're trying to do and the salaries that go along with it.
So this will be like a report or a published study or advertising campaign?
I don't know if it will be a report so much as it is, maybe.
I just didn't know what it was, Donna. I'm going to try to pick you down.
Right. No, 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 no. Well, no, what I'm envisioning is is some of the outreach activities that we're doing in conjunction with East Carolina University that they're going to try to assist with that and that we're just going to we haven't worked out the details yet, quite honestly, but we're moving forward on that. But that's one of our goals is making that so people understand who the face of the housing needs are.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you, Donna.
Right. And in order to do some of that, we have received a $3,000 grant from the National Association of Realtors to help with some of that. It's hoped that our participation in the Our State, Our Homes program will be beneficial in implementing some of these tasks that we've identified. And I just want to focus again on this, our past success. We've been successful with the legislation to build these teacher house the teacher housing units in Kill Devil Hills and in Buxton. They're integrated into the name into the neighborhoods. They match the existing scale of the neighborhoods, and so that's consistent with what we're find finding in terms of that acceptability level. I touched briefly on this just in response to Commissioner Ross's question. We are working with East Carolina University on a study for workforce housing, their community attitudes. They're leading the study. We're just really collaborating with them. They are holding community meetings later this month and next month, and they're going to be doing an online survey. The Housing Task Force President, we're doing presentations at the local governments this month. There'll probably be some additional opportunities as we get move forward with the Our State, Our Homes, and then there'll probably be other opportunities that are outreach. Subcommittee identifies as we move through 2025. And I'm going to stop right there and let Mr. Fearing, he's got his tie on for a reason. We don't want to to miss that opportunity. He's going to speak.
Donna, it's it's always scary to see how he carries that black notebook.
Oh, he has a briefcase today there, yeah.
It dates back to the twenties, and he's got more data in that, God bless him, black notebook than Carter's got liver pills.
He's looking.
So he makes it always nervous when he brings it. Look at that. He's got a plantation picture of that.
He looks extremely businesslike this morning, Malcolm.
Well, I read this thing on the internet about what color to wear, and it's blue. So I've got blue socks, blue pants, blue tie, and other things that are blue.
Got to get you a duck hunting toy. Be a real one.
Irvin, you started off with a spiritual message. I'm going to bring mine with me today, and that's a baby Jesus that we use in our church. And I need him today in this conversation that I'm having with you. And I didn't do it on the give it to Skylar in advance because I didn't finish it until about four thirty-five o'clock this morning. This is probably. This is probably the most important presentation or conversation I've had in my public life. And I'm going to try to give you all some history. Back in 1987, Mikey Daniels was the chairman, not sitting here, but sitting downtown. Ray Sturzer was the planner. Ms. Creve, I think we're 21 years old, and she was the assistant planner. And Lorraine, who was in the meeting, was the county administrator. And out of that meeting, Dare County, like other resort-oriented coastal communities, has a shortage of low and moderate-income housing. The need for such housing was identified most strongly at the public input meetings on Hatteras Island. The problem stems in part from the competition of housing between the permanent residents and the seasonal residents. Seasonal residents and second homeowners often have higher levels of disposable income available to spend on housing. At the same time, the tourist-driven economy of the county pervades the highest number of jobs in the county, but the lowest pay scales. There is a need to meet the housing needs of these lower-to-moderate-income permanent residents. That was in 1987. 1985, there was a study capacity done by Boons Allen Hamilton. It states, it's a long study, and I cherry picked it, and I'll say that I picked what I thought would be best said today. It probably 200, 300 pages. "It appears that Dare County has a growing problem of insufficient housing supply for low and moderate people living in our county. Without some corrective action, an increasing gap between job demand and available acceptable housing is likely to become an impediment to future economic expansion." This was '87, '85, and '89 is when I really first met Donna at ADCA. And we had a problem figuring out what that acronym meant. And my wife helped me on the internet last night, and it's Area Development Coordination Agency. I was there, Donna was there. That was 38 years ago. I was 34 years old. There was an award today for, that you mentioned, combined public service. Between Donna and myself, that's 75 years. If you throw Duke in the mix, that adds whatever years. And Bobby Outen also was a part of a housing initiative. So my guess, combined years, it would be approaching 100 years. In May of 2001, the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce had a community conversation on housing called A Place to Call Home. Bob, I don't know if Duke was there, I don't, Bob, I don't know if you were involved in that. Around 2005, the county established a housing subcommittee. Richard Johnson chaired that. I was a member of it, Ms. Creve, Duke, Bobby Outen, and other members of the community. Around 2017, the chamber again was advocating the critical need for housing. In the meantime, there was a CDC. I don't know if you all remember the CDC.
Oh, yeah.
It had a short life. Brings us to now, in 2004, in the leadership of Bob.
Malcolm.
Sir.
Some of us might not know why it was a short life. In just a sentence or two, why did this have a short life? Can't do that.
I refer to Bobby.
Sentence or two, Bobby, not looking for a long-winded here. Is this Community Development Corporation?
It was a community development.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit. And it had no resources, and the resources that it did use and some of the actions they take didn't turn out as planned, and it basically imploded because it couldn't carry some of the debt that they had incurred.
So plenty of money, superior management, and it ended in disaster.
Yes.
No money, no management. Thank you. Keep going.
Thank you, Bobby. Under the leadership of Bob Woodard in 2024, and this board, and hopefully the support by the future board members, the community task force was formed. In December, a unanimous plan was approved. That's why we're here today. The community is coming together. Population. In 1985, when the Boons Allen Hamilton report, the Dare County had a population of about 17,000 people in 1985. Today, our population is somewhere around 38 to 33. When you look on the internet and look at different sources, that number moves a little bit, as was illustrated earlier today. That is a 21,206 increase over 40 years in population. That's 530 people per year, or about 44 people a month, and those are averages. The UNC Carolina Population Center predicts by between now and 2030, we'll see a population growth of about 4,558 people. The incorporated municipalities have a combined population, and again, these numbers are hard to get exact, but I'm doing my best with the research that I did, of somewhere around 19,422 people in the incorporated municipalities. The unincorporated area of the county has an approximation of about 18,011. Going back to Donna's and Ms. Creve's slides about cost burden, 31% of the North Carolina Housing Coalition indicates that 31% of our population is cost burden. That would be 6,020 people in the municipalities. That'd be about 5,831 in the unincorporated areas, for a total of 11,852 people are cost burden, which is larger than the population of Kill Devil Hills, the entire population. Reported in the 25, 2025 Currituck Dare Community Foundation Community Needs Assessment, it was reported that 52% of the tenants' rent is unaffordable. In our report, there was a slide reflecting a range of salaries, if you remember that. There was a high of $52,143 and a low of $37,500. I'm going to use the $50,000 number because I can figure that a little bit better than the other ones. Going back to cost burden, that gives a net of somewhere around $3,300 a month, about $3,300 a month to that individual or family. $2,000 in rent or more, more than $2,000 in mortgage. I'm going to use the figure 2,000 because I can figure with that. That leaves about $1,300. Commissioner Ross, you ask about what that cost burden number is. This is numbers beyond that, that that individual in our county is facing. Basic food, auto, gas, a healthcare premium, internet, some would have daycare and student debt. So you can see the peril that many of our residents...
Sounds like a crushing burden, Malcolm. Am I getting it right?
Absolutely. It is absolutely...
Crushing.
Crushing to our people. Dare County, you all did a classification compensation study in 2023. Under the heading of internal equity, it was stated, the most mentioned area of concern of your employees across every department impacting both internal and external equity is the lack of affordable housing and the continued increase of living for Dare County residents. That was the most mentioned in your report. The next generation is this heading. I've got a granddaughter, I've got so many, I number them, I forget their names sometimes, Donna. This is my number seven grandchild. She's in the first grade. But the time that group of students graduate from the first grade to the 12th grade, at current funding, state, federal, and local, approximately $900 million will be spent on their education, from the first grade to the 12th grade of that group of students. There's never been a question of the generosity of the level of funding of this board and prior boards in the Dare County Board of Education to support our youth. But the question is, based on the cost of housing, is there a future where they can come home to and be a contributing member of our communities? That's why we are presenting a generational plan. And this is where I get off script. My wife told me be careful about this because she helped me type. I've got a picture of my first house across from graveyard in Manheim. And I say it was my house, it was before I got married. I was maybe 22 years old. I don't know if you can tell, the busted-out windows, a sagging porch. And over there, so what you can't see is a tree growing from kitchen to the floor. I had worked on that house for months. I was extremely proud when I took that picture. I don't know how I kept the picture, but through God's intervention, I believe He made me have that picture for today's presentation. I was one of those people, one of them, one of those people that you probably wouldn't want next to you, young, full of whatever I was full of. Fished in the summertime, shorter boats, did whatever I could in the wintertime, from brick mason work to carpentry work to working in a family store. This community surrounded me with encouragement, opportunity, that many of us here today are enjoying, that dream of living in paradise. Today, we are discussing a community issue that will only be solved by community support, from Duck to Hatteras to Roanoke Island to the mainland. It will only be solved by our community. Tess is here. She's part of the Lost Colony. One of the last things that's said, one of the last lines that I'm going to say today, and I think it sums it up in my presentation, "The dream lives. It lives and shall not die." I hope that dream will live also for that next generation of our youth and our people. I look forward to the challenge of pursuing the future for our next generation. And if you have any questions?
Don't have any.
I do.
Don't have any, but...
I do. How does that dream live? Tell me the three things that have to happen to make that dream, that prayer, come to life, and it's more than hope. I've got an edge, not at you guys, I love you guys. I've got an edge on all that you just shared with me and all of us.
So it's the community recognizing the need as a whole?
Do we have communities denying the need as a whole?
We have individuals in the community, if you read the comments on the Outer Banks Voice. But in all seriousness, we need to have a dedicated funding source. We need to have an organization, most likely a nonprofit instead of a government agency.
Why?
Because what we found in our research is that a nonprofit can pull the private partners and the local governments in together, that it takes a team, if you will. It's not just the local government, or it's not just the town, one of the towns.
I vividly remember four years ago, a team we pulled together, and we had money and land and a developer and the will, and none of it happened. So when I read that, I was trying to understand where the nonprofit would be a cause-and-effect relationship to create action and outcome.
Right. Well, that's what our research, that's the conclusion from the research that I've done on what other governments in North Carolina and nationwide, that they have a nonprofit that pulls together the public sector and the private sector.
Again, we did that. Sorry.
Well, I think...
But keep going.
I think we've got to keep trying.
No, I'm not saying don't try. I'm just saying, we did do that.
Right.
It didn't result in success, and I'm trying to figure out if we created this new third-party nonprofit, what action, what power, what authority would they have to bring about said outcomes to solve what you just presented to us as a crushing burden on so many of our friends, neighbors?
Right. Mr. Outen standing up.
I think county manager.
A couple of things that are different now than then. One is, we had a group that wasn't, it was kind of a cross-section of the community, but it wasn't nearly as broad a cross-section as what's been developed here.
Got that.
Secondly, the folks that were working on that were committed to that problem, and it wasn't for lack of effort or lack of leadership, or it was, it was for lack of vision in the community, which is what these presentations are trying to now create, is a vision in the community that didn't exist then. The people in that committee kind of got it, but there was no buy-in anywhere.
So the disconnect was everybody out there in these communities really didn't see a problem. We did, we heard it.
But the people that you saw most of the time could buy a beach box back then or could rent one, and the crisis that was just described and the disparity in incomes and rents that you just saw weren't as broad or as difficult. There was a problem, but it wasn't at the scale that we're talking about now. So I guess my whole point is, is we're at a sort of a crisis point now where something has to be done. And so the idea that leaders in all the communities will do something is going to be paramount, where it probably wasn't as far out front as it is now. Did I say that right, Malcolm?
Yes.
I mean, you were there for the same things I was.
So we were the tip of the spear four years ago, and we didn't have a lot of followers. But we've got to get the communities on board here.
I don't, you know, I don't agree that there were not a lot of followers. There were some loud mouths in the issue. Some of my friends on the internet, he's going to probably jump me now, surf one, two, This community, I do not believe is against housing for its people. I do not believe that. I believe this community is a compassionate community from the north end of the beaches to Hatteras Island to the mainland. But understanding the issue and working through that issue with a different approach...
Which would be?
And the approach that we're doing now, what we're attempting to do as volunteers is what you see before you today, as we will do in Kitty Hawk tonight, as we have done to the Chamber of Commerce, to the Tourist Bureau Board, to every community that, every entity that would allow us to come to their meeting and give them information.
So it's a campaign of persuasion?
So trying to give them information.
Persuasion to change either public opinion or public understanding of the nature of this crisis or the depth and severity of the crisis?
That's part of it.
But that's what...
That's the acceptability of it.
We're not there yet. And Malcolm, I'm going to kind of agree to disagree with you to some degree. And this isn't new, this isn't something new that I'm saying to you today because I've seated at the task force meeting. because I've said it at the task force meeting. And I'll read it on the Voice tomorrow, you can rest assured. You know, Woodard formed the task force. He put all of his cronies on the task force. No, I didn't. I went across the board and I looked at every stakeholder in the county and asked them to serve on this, and we've got a broad, broad, broad selection. But no, the Voice is gonna report and people are gonna post. I put my cronies on there, okay? Let them say it, because I could care less what they say. The point being that y'all are doing excellent work and great, outstanding work. And I'm optimistic that we're gonna get somewhere. But I'm still troubled with the fact that the community is not on board, and we've got to sell this to the people in the community that we've got to help out somehow, some way. And where we're getting kickback is, you said, you don't think people are opposed to it. They're not opposed to it, as long as it's not next door to them, okay? We have got to change the public perception. That's the number one goal in order for us to be successful. And us board of commissioners, everybody, leadership in the community, the task force has got to make that a number one priority to try to change attitudes. And Donna, did you see the news? Did you watch the news this weekend? My hometown, P-Town, Portcham, Virginia. They're building workforce essential housing. You know what a one-bedroom's going for? $400. A two-bedroom's going for $800. A three-bedroom's going for $1,200. They're doing it, why can't we do it?
Exactly.
It's public perception.
Yeah. We're well aware of that. And I think that, you know, that focuses on that acceptability portion of it. And we've got to, you know, your previous efforts were very well-intended, but I think just because you failed doesn't mean that you don't keep trying.
Amen.
If the issue's not going away.
Yeah, you misunderstand. Keep trying.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Sometimes you just.
Tell me what has to change and how it's going to change. I do not fault you, I love both you guys, you're doing a great job. But what has to change and how do we change it? I'm ready to jump in with you.
Right, well, I think the one thing that we found, and that's been demonstrated by the community input from, you know, from what the county's done, and I, you know, I sit through all the local government meetings, and so I hear public comment when they have development projects. And so I think you have to find the right place. You have to find the right type of construction. And what we've heard is, is that the large-scale projects, there's not an appetite for that. And that's always been the case. But if we try to focus on maybe pockets, or if we put it in the right location, the teacher housing in Kill Double Hills there on 8th Street, it's there in the area where there's other multifamily, it's fully integrated into the neighborhood. We just gotta find the right site and.
It's a great site, I've been there. It's a wonderful little community for our teachers.
But again, there's also things that we can do that's not necessarily focused on building physical units. There's, you know, there's programs out there from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency that we need to publicize more. And again, that's some of the outreach activity that we're gonna be doing is letting folks know about those opportunities out there. So when they go talk to their banker, they can say, hey, I'm a first-time buyer. You know, I understand that there might be some opportunities for me. So there's a lot of things out there that we're going to investigate instead of just that build option, if you will, even though that's a very big part of what we're focusing on. We're not naive enough to think that we're gonna solve this, but we can certainly try to make an effort to make it better for our generations to come because it's not going away. And Mr. Outland touched on those other studies that you had. I think they were done in 2017 and 2018. And when you looked at my slide, there was a huge jump from 2020 to 2024.
Right.
So even those studies were looking at an increased housing cost, but it wasn't exponentially like we're looking at now that we've seen in those last four COVID years.
I use the word crushing again. Any young person, any starting out, they're crushed.
I dare say that I couldn't afford to buy my house today where I am now.
No, very few people could, Donna.
Yeah. I'm struggling to pay my insurance now.
That's why I get so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is the issue. This is the issue. The housing and the price of houses here is the issue. And I appreciate everything y'all are doing to try to solve that. But this is exactly, so I know a lot of people, when I talk about cutting spending and everything, like, oh, he's a bad guy. Now, this is what I'm talking about. Everything, the price of everything's going up, those median income things, they're not changing. The 600-something thousand appraisals, that's more accurate than the 421,000 from the previous chart. And in that chart, was I correct in seeing 2,600 out of 3,000 houses in Duck are vacant?
There's a large number of vacation rentals in Duck, yes, sir.
Okay, so those are all vacant. So when I see one chart saying Duck, who has no permanent residence, hardly, according to this, needs a pickleball court, but I also have senior citizens in this county crying, literally crying, because they're afraid that with appraisals and tax increases that they could potentially lose their home because social security can't cover it. Now you see where I'm coming from on why we gotta keep these negotiated tax rates lower. And we gotta take care of the people that live here too, not just the ones that wanna live here, but people who live here as well. It's a balance, and I feel it's a tough job. It's a tough job for us, it's a tough job for y'all. And the public needs to kind of understand that more or less. They think we're gonna solve everything in a day. But it goes back to the man in the arena. If you're not familiar with Teddy Roosevelt's speech on that. This is, y'all are in your arena, we're in ours. And I do look forward to working with you in the future, because I'm new to this and all. But keep up the good work. But I agree with you wholeheartedly, this is the main issue in the county, number one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have any questions? Michael, anybody else have any questions, Donna, Malcolm?
I got an observation.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just looking back four years ago, looking today, I'm optimistic with what we have going on with your presentations to the community like you did to us, going each municipality. At that time, of course, we had the things in place, but we didn't have the enthusiasm that you guys bring to the table, the ability to go to these towns and sway them over. That was the opposition at the time, because nobody wanted in their backyard. You've got a group now together, you've got a town manager on your staff, on your group, you've got leaders in your thing that can sell this to their communities. That's positive. You know, you've got city council members from southern shores, Dare County Commissioner, County Manager. Before, we were dealing with a group of people that wanted to build something that created, unfortunately, negativity within themselves. And then that was brought forward for them to do something, and it just didn't want, did not work out. People were so against it, and it went down in flames. I feel positive about what you guys are trying to do. And it's sad when a physician, I talked to, is a running buddy of mine, and he makes $180,000 a year, and he can barely afford to buy a house. That's bad. He got 10 years of college and got student loans, and he can barely afford to buy a house. That's really bad, y'all. So, good luck. And remember this, when you go to the towns, each one of those boards have five people on the board. All you need is three. Target the three people that are willing to work with you guys and willing to make a change and have enough basketballs to step up to the plate, and we can get this thing done.
We've had very good participation from all of the towns. They have, all of them have an elected local official on there that routinely attends the meetings. And if they're unable to attend them, I brief them individually. Thank you for the opportunity this morning. I know that you guys have had a busy, busy day, and we appreciate your time this morning and the support here for.
Keep up the good work.
I wanna say, I've been going to the meetings.
Yes, ma'am, you have?
All last year, I went. And it started a little slow, but to see the collaboration and the discussions and the questions and the interaction that the towns are having with each other and with Malcolm and Donna is extremely encouraging. I feel very encouraged that there is gonna be a resolution. And I wanna tell you, getting that application accepted and being part of the UNC School of Government Study is, it's a grand slam. I mean, it's validating everything that you guys have worked hard for, and I'm honored to be a part of it and see it. It's fantastic. So again, absolutely keep up the good work. And I love, like, seeing all the towns talking and the stakeholders from the unincorporated areas is very inspirational. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, and I'll speak for the board, and I'm sure they'll back me. We'll do, continue to do whatever we can to make this move forward and successful.
Thank you.
Well, in closing, the most important thing that we have to do, our task, is to do it correctly.
Right.
Instead of quickly.
Right.
And so that's what we're gonna focus on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
County Manager?
This is item 13 on the agenda. This is a resolution requesting that the jetty light at Oregon Atlantic remain in place and be repaired or replaced. Would you like me to read it, or you all have it, or do you just like to act on it? I didn't know with time and strength whether we need to read all these or not.
Well, this was brought to my attention, and that's why I had Bobby put this on the agenda. And I spoke with Transportation Representative Alan Moran. So. No, this is a light, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is different, my apology, my apology. Go ahead, please read it, Bobby.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas federal aids to navigation are the main aids to navigation consisting of visual, audible, electronic signals that are installed, maintained by the U.S. Coast Guard to assist the prudent mariner in the process of navigation. Whereas the U.S. Coast Guard is responsible for ensuring that the aids to navigation are maintained and functioning properly. Whereas the Oregon inlet jetty light, light list number 615, has been reported to be in disrepair with a light displaying improper characteristics and the dayboard destroyed as outlined in many weekly local notice to mariners issued by the U.S. Coast Guard. And whereas local U.S. Coast Guard officials have indicated that the future of the Oregon inlet jetty light is now under review and that the proposed outcomes will be published soon in a weekly local notice to mariners that could propose disestablishing or replacing the Oregon inlet jetty light in Dare County, North Carolina. And whereas Oregon inlet is extremely important to the local economy of Dare County as it serves as the primary access point to the ocean for commercial and recreational fishing needs, thus supporting industries like boat building, seafood processing, fishing tournaments, which contribute significantly to the region's income and employment opportunities. And whereas Oregon inlet is one of the most dangerous inlets in the East Coast due to its consistently shifting sandbar, strong currents, and unpredictable waves caused by wind and tides, making navigation challenging even for experienced boaters. And whereas local mariners depend upon the Oregon inlet jetty light along with other aids to navigation to safely navigate the coast and to transit the inlet from dusk to daylight. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners requests that the Oregon inlet jetty light remain in place and that be either repaired or replaced promptly to ensure the continued safety of mariners and the economic vitality of the region. This is the third day of February 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oregon inlet jetty light that has been reported as in disrepair. United States Coast Guard officials from AMP actually came to the Oregon inlet task force and let us know that the light is under review to either be, like I said, either repaired or dismantled. And the Oregon inlet task force voted unanimously to send this resolution to the board. Hopefully we have it adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. It's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign. Motion carries unanimous. On that same note, Bobby, let me interject that mariners are having trouble with the camera that's mounted on the Bass Night Bridge, that it's very poor visibility compared to all the other cameras throughout the county that the state has. And the reason being, it is 300 feet up in the air, and so they don't get a very good shot of the inlet being open. So it's been brought to my attention. I've talked to Transportation Representative Alan Moran about the possibility of a better camera. He talks about compatibility, that all the cameras that they have are the very same. But he will look and see if there might be an advanced camera, better quality, whatever, that's compatible with them so that we can hopefully replace that on the Bass Night Bridge because it's tough for mariners to see coming in and out of the inlet. So just wanna let you know I was on top of that. So, thank you, County Manager.
Did that got approved? Are we ready to move to the next one?
Yes, it was approved.
Item 14 is a resolution regarding the North Carolina Division Marine Fisheries Draft Fisheries Management Plan for Spotted Sea Trout. And Commissioner House, I wonder if you have anything to add to that?
This is actually, I've kind of watched this a little bit too, and also actually Hyde County introduced this resolution as well. The Spotted Sea Trout Fish Management Plan is now, has been approved by the commission and now sent to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee in Agriculture. One of the things that we all feel is it's definitely disproportionate between the recreational and commercial fishing, which is the spotted sea trout is mainly, or not mainly, but as far as harvest is concerned, is more of a recreational fish than is a commercial fish. And in that situation, this plan actually calls for a 38.3% reduction in a commercial harvest while only a 26.7% recreational harvest. And it's very disproportionate.
Are these statements in fact disputed by the Marine Fisheries Commission?
No, we're using their data.
Okay, then this is nonsensical.
Yes.
All right. I read it, and I thought this is nonsensical. They must be arguing and disputing what you've said in the resolution. Okay.
So.
Yeah, they're bad.
County Manager, if you wanna read it or.
It's a legally resolutions. I'll ask the board if they prefer us, they'll go.
I'm good.
I read it.
You guys good?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Off the hook. All right. There's a motion on the floor then by the Vice Chair to approve the resolution as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Creef and Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Steve.
Next is a resolution concerning the regulation of kratom in North Carolina. Dorothy and her staff, and me a little bit, but mostly them. Sheila. Worked on this, trying to capture our discussions and get them in the form of a resolution. We think that we've captured what you had told us. If we haven't, then we'll amend it. But with that said, the resolution is in front of you.
Let's take the time to read this one.
Okay. Whereas kratom is a tropical evergreen tree native to Southeast Asia. And whereas kratom contains alkaloids including mytragina 7, I'm not gonna be able to say this, hydroxymetagreen, which can produce stimulant and opioid-like effects. And whereas kratom is used by some individuals for pain relief, mood enhancement, and to manage opioid withdrawal symptoms. And whereas there's growing concern about the potential for kratom abuse, addiction, and serious adverse health effects, including liver damage, respiratory depression, and death. And whereas the unregulated sale of adulterated kratom poses significant risk to public health and safety. And whereas proper regulation of natural unadulterated kratom may offer potential benefits for certain medical conditions while minimizing risk. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners expresses support for banning the over-the-counter sale of adulterated kratom. This includes products that have been chemically altered, mixed with other substances, or that contain synthetic compounds. Implementing strict regulations and oversight for the sale and distribution of natural processed kratom. This may include licensing and registration requirements for sellers, age restrictions for purchase, clear and prominent warning labels on kratom products, prohibition of kratom sales to individuals with certain medical conditions, and establishment of a robust system for monitoring adverse effects associated with kratom use. And three, supporting scientific research to better understand the pharmacological effects of potential risks from kratom, develop safe and effective medical uses for kratom, and inform the development of appropriate regulatory frameworks. Be it further resolved that this body calls upon the relevant state and federal government agencies, including the U.S. Food and Drug Administration and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to take immediate action to address the public health concerns related to kratom. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the Dare County Board of Health and Human Services, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, this is the third day of February. February 2025.
All right, I'll ask the board if there's any heartburn with this resolution.
No, I thought it was extremely well-written. I was going to ask you who did because it was very well-done. I thought extremely well-done. Thank you.
When you all thought I need to come back and follow up with that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any concerns with this resolution?
I agree with you, Mike.
Okay.
I like that it says, specifies the unadulterated to the other.
Right.
Yeah. I think that was an important key piece.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Is it?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is a motion to approve by Commissioner Bateman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
In our last meeting, we also had a long discussion about local regulation. And I had made contact with the school of government, and I talked with Sheila at some length. And she also talked with folks at the school of government and the Department of Health and Human Services. The long and the short of that discussion is, it may be possible, if you all wanted to do that, to do something along those lines. But if you wanted to have it as a countywide issue, then it would probably need to be done through the Health Department. And so I've asked for Sheila to do the research, find out what we can and can't do, and then run that through the Health Board and see if there's enough evidence to give them a basis. There's some statutory requirements they have to follow in order to put those regulations in place. And do they have enough data or local data to go in that, to do that? And so that's something that will come up on their agenda in the future. I don't know if it's next month or the following, but.
At the end of this month.
At the end of this month. To begin that discussion at their level, to see if there's something that they think they can do, and to see if there's enough data out there to give them the criteria that they need to adopt those kinds of regulations. So just to know, we didn't drop that and let it go. That's, that's out there working. Okay.
Good. Thank you, Bobby.
Yep. Next is the purchase of bear-proof cans. In your packet, you have some information that I sent you. Several years ago, we had problems with bears getting in the trash cans in Mann's Harbor. And we went about and we purchased cans that were bear-proof. They almost looked like a Yeti cooler, but it's a trash can.
Have we received any pushback from the bear community on the mainland?
The bear. They're leaving in drugs because they can't eat because.
Right. And there's a migratory issue at stake here, too.
It has been helpful. We've about, those cans lasted us a couple of years, and they're about to run out. And Shannon wanted to know that we go out and buy some more. They're, they're fairly expensive. They cost us over almost $400 apiece. We're selling them back to the public for what we sell a regular can for, which is like $85 or $90. And so we're subsidizing the difference in those costs. And so the question becomes, do we go forward and buy new cans? We can only buy them in lots of 100.
That answers my question.
And so in your packet, the number was 39995. That number is six or eight months old. The new number is 44899.
And tomorrow it'll be 49999.
And so the question becomes, do we move forward with that plan? And if we do, then are we prepared to spend that? I guess we would get that 44899 out of our contingency.
So for funds?
We can move from one fund to the other if it's from the general to that fund.
Right. We're hearing from the finance director here. Where are we going here, Dave?
Well, it's in the sanitation fund. It's not in the general fund. And you could transfer it, but historically you've never done that.
Right. So what, what we would do if we go forward is you would have to authorize us to either look for, figure out how to do it out of the sanitation fund. And if we can't do it for whatever reason, the sanitation fund, then to move contingency from the general fund to the sanitation.
How many would we sell if we priced them $400?
None.
Very few.
How about none?
How much, how much is a regular trash cans? How much do they cost a piece?
What, the $96 or 100, under, under 100?
So if I called and I needed a new trash can, how much is it costing the county?
Nothing.
Like, when you guys buy them, how much does it cost?
You pay for that. That's, that's $96.
To have it delivered.
To have it delivered to your house.
My problem is with the word bear-proof. Maybe bear-preventative. They are not bear-
How about bear-resistant?
Well, I was, I was going to have some fun.
I'd have them rip doors out of barns.
I was going to have some fun and say, I was going to have some fun and say, what about two eye bolts and a bungee cord? But.
Well, we had, just so you know, I mean, we had people, if you all recall, those of you who were on the board, come up at every meeting for, gosh, several meetings.
Yeah.
Since we bought the cans, we haven't had anybody come, and we haven't had a phone call, other than to come buy a can.
My trash can gets destroyed and never gets replaced.
By the bears?
No. Well, if there's a bear driving that truck, it would have my road every day.
So just for your information, what the board said at that time was, we require everybody in the county to spend $96 to replace their trash cans that get damaged. We have a problem down there, so we'll buy a can that won't get damaged by a bear, or is bear-resistant. And we charge them 96. So everybody's paying the same thing throughout the county to get a trash can.
Except that the bear trash can costs a lot more.
Okay. Well, I'm just telling you what the board said. So.
Yeah.
Just guarantee, if I'm yelling at the situation.
How many did we get last time?
We would buy 100.
You have to buy 100.
That what y'all did last time, just 100?
Well, we bought, we bought 200 last time.
Yeah.
Get rid of them all?
I said, we might have only bought 100.
All but 12. We got 12 left.
12 of them left.
Since there's only a few left.
There's only a few left.
Two years.
Two years. Right.
I thought it'd been longer than that.
It's been longer than that.
Yeah, it's been longer than that.
Wait a minute, I wrote it down. Let's see.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Jim brought it.
You're right. It's been three years.
Yeah.
So we gotta buy four grand worth of trash cans to cover four years. I mean, we're crying over like.
Forty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking, I mean, this is, I mean, if the people ain't calling back, the trash can's being ripped all over the road.
So I guess to move forward, is that what you're?
Yeah, I think it's worth it not to have.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it's.
I still want to hear from the bear community.
Yeah.
So I need a motion.
So we have a motion to approve?
No.
So we have motion by Commissioner Bateman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the minutes of January the 6th. You have the tax collector's report. You have U.S. cellular land and sublease. You have the Thomas A. Baum Center Advisory bylaws. You have an authorization to present a service weapon to a retiring deputy sheriff. And you have Health and Human Services, Public Health, state funding for public health infrastructure and local workforce development.
Motion to approve?
It's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman House to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. You have the Aging Advisory Council. Laura Lewis and General Weiner both have terms expiring this month and both wish to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint.
Motion to reappoint by Commissioner Balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Planning Board. The terms of James Buddy Shelton and Terry Gore II both have terms expiring this month and both would like to be reappointed.
Wait, did we get those in those? Are there two boards?
There's two boards. What about?
And older.
And older. You skipped over the older.
I've got the Aging Advisory Council, then the Planning Board.
No, I've got.
No, we got older, we got older coming up next.
That's third. Yeah, I hadn't gotten to that one yet.
Yeah.
The Older Adult Services Council recommends Elizabeth Smith to be reappointed to fill a vacancy.
Correct. That's the third one on my list.
The second.
We only did two.
Okay. Well, I've got, my list is longer than yours.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right. Go ahead and do that one if that's where you're ready.
Yeah, that's where we are.
Okay. So this is the Older Adult Services Advisory Council recommends that Elizabeth Smith be appointed to fill vacancy.
Right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by the Vice Chairman.
House. Is there a second?
Seconded by Commissioner Creef. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then I have, the Planning Board has two positions that are expiring for James Buddy Shelton and Terry Gore II, and both would like to be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint both.
It's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman House.
Second.
To appoint. It's been seconded by Commissioner Creef and Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then finally, the Senior Tar Heel Legislative Delegate. The terms for Kay White and Suzanne Kelly expire in 2025. Neither of them wish to be reappointed. Laura Alvarico, the Director of the Area Aging, and Jennifer Tolbert has been nominated to replace Kay White, and Maggie Dennis has been nominated to replace Suzanne Kelly.
Move to nominate Jennifer Tolbert and Maggie Dennis to this board, Senior Tar Heel Legislative Delegate.
Okay. It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then your upcoming appointments, you have the Parks and Rec Advisory Board in March with one term expiring, and the Working Waterman with one term expiring in March. In April, you have the Mann's Harbor Commission with four terms expiring. And in May, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with one term expiring, the Veterans Advisory Council with one term expiring, the Working Waterman Commission with two terms expiring, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment with two terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item 19, Commissioner Business and County Manager Business. Do you have anything?
Yes, sir. And I apologize because I've got several, and I know this meeting's running really long. But.
Okay.
First, we're about to close on the Davidson property in Naggs Head, the Naggs Head property that we're buying for the EMS station. And then sometime after that, the Dare Building Supply Dare Concrete property down in Waves for that EMS station. On Friday, I got something from the title insurance company. They need a resolution from us approving the purchases and authorizing us, me, to sign all the documents and transfer all the funds and the things that we need to do to close on those transactions. You all have approved those previously, but we didn't do it, and we don't typically do it in resolution form. But for whatever reason, they want it in a resolution form. So I'm asking for you all to approve a resolution. And I have that, and it says, whereas the Board of Commissioners at their November 3rd meeting approved the terms, conditions, and authorized the execution of a contract purchased property owned by Charles S. Davidson Family Limited Partnership, which property is described in a deed recorded in Book 1689, page 261 of the Dare County Registry, and at their September 3rd, 2024 meeting, approved the terms and conditions to authorize the execution of a contract to purchase property owned by the town of Naggs Head, described in Book 2575, page 6 of the Dare County Registry. And whereas the parties to the aforesaid contracts desire to close on the purchase and sale of this property described in the contracts upon the terms of the contracts, now therefore the Dare County Board of Commissioners resolve that the Dare County Manager is authorized to execute all documents, transfer all funds, execute all budget amendments, deliver all closing proceeds, and take all other actions necessary to close upon the purchase of the property described above pursuant to the terms of the contract this, the third day of February 2025. And if you approve this, include in your motion the Waves property, which will be another resolution just like this, and we'll have a different description. Everything else will be exactly the same.
I'm motion to approve both, even though, like you, I think it's highly unusual. They would ask it for it in a resolution form. But I'd like to approve both of them.
And including the third as the Waves property?
Including the third, yes.
Okay.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris and Balance. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
As an abundance of caution, last week, I got an email from the Tourism Board wanting to know, were we okay with them releasing the funds that we approved way back for them to repay Naggs Head for the property that they put in the tourism site there in Naggs Head? That was something we did in conjunction with the contract to purchase the Naggs Head property that you just did a resolution on. As we're about to close, they want confirmation at the Tourism Board that it's okay for them to begin that process after we've closed that.
I thought that was a done deal.
I thought it was, too. But if there's any ambiguity, then I'm just saying, listen, in an abundance of caution, somebody make a motion and approve that again.
Motion to approve.
Well, I need to make it known, go back to the minutes.
I did.
That this is the second time that we've approved this.
It is.
Okay. It's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
In your packet, I think, or in your, on your desk, there's a, if I can find mine, a resolution for you to update the 2016 Beach Inlet Management Plan. In 2016, you had approved, I think, a similar resolution. The BIMP is the study that told the value of the beaches, and it's, is a part of an effort to get state funding to help us with our beach re-nourishment programs throughout the county, actually throughout the state. NC Biwa, North Carolina Beach Inlet Waterways Association, has been pushing the legislature to fund an update of that because this one's so old, and the numbers that they say aren't relevant. Now, they're too small, and they, they need more money in the fund. This resolution is our request that the legislature fund that Beach Inlet Management Plan study, and I need approval for that.
Pleasure, Board.
Motion we approve.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance. It's been seconded by.
Second.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Over the last couple of years, we've been working hard with training our staff on lots of things. But one of the areas where we've had training and more training than maybe we've had in the past is with our OSHA work. And I just want to report out some success. The total cases from our training program and the work, the total cases away from work decreased by over half since, compared from 2024 in one year to 2023. The total days away from work went from 456 lost days to 76 lost days. The total number of transfer days went from 556 to 98. Our DART rate, DART means days away restricted or transferred, the rate went from 3.37 to 1.79. You can see from those statistics that those training programs that we do and the money that we spend to do that are successful because the days lost and the time we have to pay. When we lose an employee, he still gets paid, but somebody else has to come in and do that job, or we do overtime, or we bring somebody back in. And so it's expensive for the county for those lost days. And when we can increase them, they help us tremendously. And so, again, report out the success. This is a part of a lot of work done by HR. It's also a lot of work done by our departments and our department heads to get their staff in there to do these training things. And we're trying to do these, not just with OSHA, but across another, a number of other lines and things that we need training on. I got an email today during the meeting from the Coastal Federation. The Coastal Federation has been active in removing derelict vessels and doing things to help us. And they've helped us with some of these old sunken boats that are real hard to move. And there's not good legislation that makes it easy for us to do that. The legislature a few years ago delegated some of that to the Wildlife Resources Commission, and they've worked through the Coastal Federation to try to solve that. The letter requests that we write a letter in support of continued funding and more tools to continue the removal of those derelict boats that are in our harbors and our waterways that gum up the works. And so if you all are amenable to that, then I need authorization for us to do a letter of support for the chairman's signature.
So moved.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then in public comments, somebody mentioned that we need to prepare for the possible loss of federal funding for grants and things like that. We have, our staff has already, of course, as soon as that came out, began looking at that. There was a conference call Thursday with the Association of County Commissioners. The takeaway for that is nobody knows anything. Nobody knows what it means. Nobody knows how it's going to impact. There weren't enough details in the executive orders to know what and where and how it was going to impact. And so pretty much everybody's telling everybody to stay tuned, sit tight. As these things work their way through, we'll figure out what the impacts are. And then we have a few days later where that executive order is withdrawn. And so now we're kind of back to where we were, but we know that maybe something else is coming that's got a better plan to it or whatever. So it's out there. We all know about it, but really nobody knows how to react. And so everybody's moving along with what they've got. And as we hear more, we'll react more, and certainly we'll bring that to you as we hear things going forward. The second thing that caught my attention is somebody mentioned that to get an ambulance to Wanchees took over 20 minutes.
20 minutes on my notes to follow up.
Well, I asked Jenny, I asked Jenny during our meeting to send me the statistics on that. System-wide, in all of Dare County, 90% of our calls, we respond to in 13 minutes or less. In Wanchees, 80% of our calls, we respond to. In Wanchees, 80% of our calls, we respond to in 12 minutes or less. And 90% of our calls, we respond to in 13 minutes or less. So at the 90th percentile, we're right on track in Wanchees, which we are with what we do throughout the county. Now, you know, that's an average, there's some places that are faster and some places that may be a little slower. But in Wanchees, that's what we get. And that's based on 2022 numbers, and that's 138 calls that we get down there in a year.
So those are actual numbers, you're not making those up?
Those are true numbers.
You didn't invent those for the meeting?
Right.
Thank you.
So just so you're aware that there's nothing unusual going on in Wanchees with EMS responses. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you County Manager. I'll go to our Public Information Office, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
I have a few items I'd like to hear quickly. I had attended the parent information session that was held today, and I wanted to kind of report out on that. It was for the parents of eighth graders that have an interest in going to the early college next year. And it was a great meeting. Denise Fallon, who's the Director of Secondary Education, presented. She has a great deal of experience as a former principal at NAP and Currytuck. I was very impressed, it was well-attended. They had these meetings at the other middle schools, in Hatters, and of course, on the beach. And every question was answered, everything you would want to know, I mean.
I talked to Steve about it, and it looks like they're, I think they're going to be full with their first 50.
Yeah, because it opened today, so parents and students, there's a, on the application, parents and students have to fill out. And so 50 is the first year, and then eventually it'll grow. But it was very well done, and I was impressed. And two upcoming events, the State of the County tickets went on sale. When I last checked, there were two tickets left, so it's about sold out.
We have like 225 seats that sold out in less than, less than 48 hours.
If I were you, I'd bring that comedy routine, that thing is starting to catch on, I'm telling you. Just seeing like it is.
But we will video, you know, record it, and then make it available for people who can attend.
We've started, we've started working on it. Dorothy and I spent two or three hours the other day. And so we're working on, we've got the format out, and we're working on the slides now. And then, once we get all that together, we'll start putting it all together, tweaking it. And we're trying to allow more room this time, this year, to allow for some questions from the audience. And I'm just going to, instead of telling how many trash cans we sold or bought, and how many EMS calls we've made, all that's on our website. I'm going to focus on five key areas this year.
And next week, we have the ribbon cutting for the Roanoke Island Youth Center on Thursday, 3:30. And I'm happy that the students will participate, you know, the after-school students, so that's exciting. And then, just last, I want to give a shout out because some of the town communicators reminded us, and I wanted to mention it to you, that Friday, February 21st, is National Government Communicators Day. It's a day that's set aside to recognize the contributions of public communicators. And here in Dare County, that includes, of course, those of us in your PR department. I want to give a shout out to Caitlin and Stephanie and the guys back in Current TV, Chad and Casey. But also to our Public Information Group, which is, these aren't full-time communicators, but they're personnel in each department that serve as the person who coordinates with us in the PR department to help tell their stories and stay up to date on what's going on. So they're an important part of what we do. And then also, the other group I wanted to mention are our OBX PIOs. We have about 25 Public Information Officers or Government Communicators who work together. So quite often, we're talking behind the scenes for consistency, and we reinforce each other's messages, ask for advice. And of course, during crisis situations, we come together to work together from emergency management. So I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged all those people that are so important, that are working behind the scenes to...
Absolutely, good deal.
Let people stay informed and...
You got that right.
But that's all I have.
Thank you Dorothy.
Thank you.
Appreciate them updates. Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have any, anything else to add?
No, sir.
Welcome back home.
Thanks.
Hope you had a great trip.
We did.
Great trip. All right, that brings us to Commissioner Business. Commissioner Balance, will you kick that off today?
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to be quick, because I know Rob's getting restless.
No, I'm hoping we can continue through the afternoon.
I know, why not?
This is great.
Thursday was great, going to Edenton Chawan, it was a great experience. The board retreat, I was thoroughly enjoyed having the time to learn about how this whole thing works. It was really informative, I had a, it was, it was just great. The one thing that stuck with me is when that lady said, the one, the first one that was talking, and says, said that as a commissioner, legislation tells you what you can do, not what you can't do. That kind of stuck, because you know I'm a policy person. Anyway, I had an opportunity to meet with Dave Halick the other day, it was really informational. It was, he just, is just a wealth of information and so supportive of everything that we're doing and willing to sit down and talk about anything, and I just really appreciated that time. I participated in the Manio, Manio Middle School, I don't know if you guys know this, but Manio has a really strong Avid program, and...
What is Avid, just for those of us that might not know?
I can't remember that.
You don't need to acronym, what does it cover?
Oh, Avid teaches study and study skills and stuff like that. It's, and Manio High School is a, they're a, like a, what do you call it? What's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, they're like a feature school, like a school that wants to get into Avid. They can go to, they're approved to go to Manio to learn how to do it, like they're a... And so the middle school is working really hard to build those, those things up as well. So the Manio Middle School Avid class had elected officials, I don't know if anybody, anybody else got, but I know most of the Board of Ed went and interviewed with those Avid students, and it was really fun, and the kids got really into it. So they're making these posters of the people they interviewed, and they've done it for all the teachers. So there's, it was just really neat, and it's really good to see that program growing. It teaches kids how to study and be students and be successful at post-college. Yeah. I was going to mention also, what Dorothy mentioned about the early college, that it looks like they are going to have at least 50 for that starting class, which is really encouraging. Super excited, and I'm sure Steve will talk about this a little bit more, so I won't steal his thunder, but the MFC meeting being in Dare County is a huge, like, I can't even tell you how much that means to me after all the meetings I've traveled to Washington and Morehead for. Had my first meeting with Children and Youth Partnership, it went really good. Did you have that fire? She's going to put up the, so the Kids Fest is coming up in May. They're doing the Kids Fest on May 9th, and they're still looking for sponsors for that. And then, at the end of February, they have the, it's Block Extravaganza, they have this playtime. And they've got some really great programs going on and some fundraisers coming up. So if you have a chance, they are still looking for volunteers for those two sessions. That's going to be at the Nags Head Church. So, other than that, I think I'm good.
Great, thanks so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
I also will be brief. Congratulations to our Employee of the Year, Mr. Hester. I'm sure, Matt, I'm looking at you with the headphones in the back, you didn't see that one coming. Congratulations, and to all of those monthly winners, what a great group, that's terrific. On the 15th of this month at 11:30, I'm looking at Commissioner Bateman, he and I will be entering the water for the polar plunge, raising tens of thousands of dollars for Special Olympics. So support them.
I want to see a full-bodied duck.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to see knees, I want to see full-bodied duck.
Okay, we're going to do our very best to accommodate the chairman's request. On the 13th at 3:30, we are commemorating our new youth center in Manio. Fantastic, that's going to be a ribbon cutting, right Dorothy?
It is.
Pretty cool there. And over at College of the Albemarle on Saturday, the 22nd at 3:00 p.m., in light of and in tune with Black History Month, they're presenting some incredible videos of the early life station staffing and achievements and accomplishments, which I think are going to be fascinating. So I'm heading over there on the 22nd, College of the Albemarle, 3 o'clock, and that's going to be cool stuff. And just a small message, Sheriff Toudy had a very big health issue with one of his grandchildren that has resolved well. And our congratulations and best wishes to the sheriff and his family. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Rob, that was really incredible.
Little Eli was six and a half months old, but he's come out the other side.
Prayers get answered, fantastic. Vice Chairman?
Yes, the County Manager myself have argued justice and about the mooring of Ms. Katie at the Oregon Eagle Fishing Center. And it's something that we've kind of started working with, and we've talked to Dave Halick before. And things kind of got put on the wayside because of other priorities we had going on at the time. And the Oregon Eagle Task Force, in their last meeting, passed a motion that I should bring it back to the County Manager for us to start discussions, and they wanted to have the full support of the Board. I don't think we need a motion for it, just a consensus.
If you, to expedite the process, if you would make a motion to approve it and authorize us to sign any resolutions or other documents we need to satisfy the Park. The way it works, they won't allow a private entity to dock there, but they will allow another government entity to have control of the dock, and then we can allow them to dock there. So they need a request from us, so you all need to actually vote on that. And if they need it in a resolution form, then we need authority to put that in a resolution as well.
Right, I was wondering if you wanted to do discussions first to work out the fine details, then come back with a resolution?
That'd be up to you all.
What's the urgency?
It's fairly urgent, but it's not like an emergent thing.
I mean, do we have time to wait another month?
Yeah, if we, if we can start...
That's your pleasure.
Yeah, we can start having those discussions with Superintendent Halick, see what all went in, and bring it back to us at the next Commissioners' Meeting so we can go ahead and approve it.
That's fine.
That's fine.
All right.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, make a motion that the County Manager enter into discussions with Superintendent Dave Halick and the possibility of having Ms. Katie mooring at the Oregon Eagle Fishing Center for overnight purposes.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Balance, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Also, as it was brought up, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission is having their February 19th through the 21st meeting here at the Hilton Garden Inn in Kitty Hawk. First time we've had their meeting here in Dare County in over four years.
Okay, you said it, Commissioner Balance said it, what changed? How did this happen?
An individual on the board.
An individual.
The Chairman who was on the Board of, who sets up where the meetings are, he was removed. Now we have a new Chairman.
Thank you.
And he has, the very first thing he did say was, we're having a meeting in Kitty Hawk because we sent them a resolution requesting it.
Thank you.
So I would ask everybody in Dare County, if they can make that meeting, to show up, just show up. You don't have to say anything, just be there to say, you know, to show support. If you do want to comment, public comment starts at February 19th at 6:00 p.m. And they'll run it for a few hours, and then they'll cut it off, and it'll start back on the 20th in the morning. But definitely, if you can make it, at least show your face and say, hey, we support our commercial fishermen, and thanks for being here. And also, probably the most glorious part of any Commissioners' meeting, Matt, have you got the pet of the week?
Our pet of the week this week is Goose. Neat goose. This handsome boy was surrendered into our care after a very sad tragedy. Goose was not shown the love he deserved in his previous home. But regardless of how he was treated, he is still so gentle and sweet. Goose is looking to find a home where he can be included as part of the family. To adopt Goose or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org, or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So definitely run down to the SPCA, check out Goose. And if you adopt Goose, that tells you you've got to adopt another dog and name him Maverick, so we can get the full Top Gun exposure out there. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Speaking of Ms. Katie, has she, do we, is she not working in the inlet right now?
She is working in the inlet right now.
Okay, because I went by there a couple of times, going over to Cooten, coming back, and it was a very, very calm day, and I didn't...
Well, there was, it was the last week?
Yeah.
She was down at Hatters.
Okay, all right, good. Congratulations to Skylar, good job, you know, that's, that's big, yeah. Yeah, and Matt, congratulations, Employee of the Year, and to the recipients of the Employee of the Month and longevity. Remember, the polar plunge, we only, talking about me and Commissioner Ross, there's five more on this board.
I'm gone.
Good, fantastic, and you're going to jump?
He's under, hey, he's under, he's under the weather now, he's going to be, he's going to get, even get worse jumping in that.
I'm bouncing back. I'm bouncing back. Personally, I'm young and strong, and it doesn't affect me.
Well, then, that means we only have three more to go and make it 100%. It would be fantastic to have 100% participation.
I will jump into cold water. That's a Saturday, is that Saturday?
I'm not unopposed to cold water. And as well, the County Manager and the clerk. Anyway.
It don't bother me.
Guys, I went by the youth center, let me just tell you, the youth center, it had to have, had to have 50 kids on that new playground that it got back there, the Defense Area Inn. Now, the downside of that is they've abused the dickens out of the grass. Their grass was all muddy, and they were sliding down the little embankment back there. I don't know if we need to put some, or whatever the Parks and Rec folks and public works decides we need to do, there's, we need to do something.
You talking about where the equipment is?
Yeah.
We're supposed to be moving that equipment to the new property that we purchased.
Okay.
Aren't we Bobby? That's what I've been told, that we're supposed to move that equipment.
We're waiting to close out to see what our funding is.
Got you, we're waiting to close out, see what our funding is.
But anyway, the property needs some help, but the place is getting utilized, like unbelievable.
Yeah.
Polar plunge, that, congratulations to Ms. Katie, that's all I got, I'm short.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Creve?
Oh, yeah, number one, also been praying for Eli. Obviously, you know, when you've got a small child like that in that kind of a dire situation, prayer is very important, and I'm very, very thankful for the outcome of that. Obviously, we spoke on that prior. Another thing is, is the Marine Fisheries Meeting that's coming in February is important. And every commercial fisherman that I know and fish with over the years needs to be there. Be in attendance, you don't have to talk, probably better off, they're better off telling me what to say, and then let me go up there and relay it in a nicer fashion. Another thing, nobody's touched on it, Dorothy, I just want to double-check this, is at 4 o'clock today, we are at Manio High School, they're naming the gymnasium after Mr. Steve today.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Yeah.
4:30.
Yes.
Well, it's not anymore, it's not a secret anymore.
No, it's not a secret.
Oh, yeah, good point, good point.
4:30, Mr. Steve was very special to me. I didn't take his position at Keller's because that's impossible to do. I simply created a new role there. That man was an incredible person, and I am so honored to have the opportunity to be there while they named the gymnasium at Manio High School after him, so that's a big deal. Other than that, I like the direction our country's moving, I like the direction our county's moving. In our trip to New Bern... county's moving, in our trip to New Bern, we, the one thing that I got out of it the best was, I know I'm working with a bunch of good people, we had fun while we were down there, got to know each other a little bit. There might have been some bad meatloaf, but, but the rest of it was pretty darn cool.
Never gonna forget the meatloaf.
Never gonna forget the meatloaf. It was an absolute pleasure.
The meatloaf community is pushing back on this criticism.
No, I just want the public to know that I work with one of the greatest boards in North Carolina, with some of the greatest people, and we all bring a unique and a different perspective to doing this job, but that's what makes us great. Thank you for all the staff in here today, it's been a long meeting, and time to cut lights out.
Thanks, Commissioner, appreciate it. Mr. Burris?
I was forgetting the microphone. I'll be brief to Dare Arts Council, 50th year. So they're doing a 50 for 50, where they want you to donate 50 bucks. So all of you get your checkbooks out, and, and you can go online, they'll take credit card online for that, 50 and 50, that's great. They're also gonna be doing the Frank Stick Art Show starting this month. The, of course, I echo your sentiments on Mr. Steve last night, one of the finest gentlemen you'd ever meet. So that's, that's a great honor up there. I'd be excited to go to that later today. Polar Plunge will be fun, I think we'll have a good time, for a great cause, love those folks. And other than that, that's, you know, just for being brief sake, we'll call it a day.
Great, thanks, Commissioner, I appreciate it. That brings us to, I'd like to make a motion to a closed session in accordance with NCGS 143-318.11A3, to consult with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege relative to the Lutz matter, and to approve the minutes of the last closed session. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, could you add to that motion, also to give the position to be taken by on behalf of an agent for the county to purchase a real estate for the Stan White property, and, let's see, and also to just review the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, employment, or conditions of initial employment of a public officer, prospective public officer employee.
Yeah, y'all heard what I said. Add that to the motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor, seconded by the vice chair, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose like sign, motion carries.
Chairman, one last thing before we go leave for closed session. I meant to do it when I was up before, update you on the water project across the sound. Matt, can you put that picture up?
Are we still in session?
Yeah, we're still in session. You can discuss this to the closed session in just a second. If you look at that picture, that's the water line that has to be buried under the sound.
Ooh, that is a diameter, isn't it?
That's a big one. We entered the contracts, and they started work on that project on Monday. They tell us they'll be finished with it by April 30th. We don't get into trouble until school gets out in mid-July, so we've got some lead time in case weather or something slows them down. There's, there's no issues.
They're gonna bury that thing?
They're gonna bury it.
Yeah, they're gonna bury it.
They, they bury it in sections, and what they do is they'll take what you saw there, they'll put that, each section is the length of a 18-wheeled truck, they'll take metal and do it down till they get it at the right angle and get it going, and then they'll run the, it's not PVC, it's some other kind of material that you use for water, through that metal pipe that guides it through, and then they, it's roughly the same diameter, but they run that through under the sound, they start on both ends and work to the middle and then attach it in the middle.
How do they, how do they seal those steel drums there? Are they welded together?
What they do is, they, when they go through, they're welded, yes, they're welded together when they put them down, and they act as the, sort of the guide for the plastic pipe that goes through there, and then they run those through there. We have all the materials here, and like I say, they were out there, I saw on Monday, beginning that work and doing their probing and doing the things they gotta do. So I'll let you know that because we don't anticipate any problems, we don't anticipate any concerns, but, you know, should there be something crazy happen, then we do have a plan to try to figure out what to do, and, you know, what we're trying to avoid is our worst case, and that would be if we had to do some kind of water restrictions in June and July, which we would not anticipate.
Hopefully not.
Hey, Bobby, make sure that you do an incentive to which one gets to the middle first. You know that there was three companies that bid on building the Trans United States Railroad? Well, at first, the government was gonna pay based on by square mile of track laid, and where every mile of track you put down, you got X amount of dollars from the Federal Reserve. What you ended up happening was railroad companies, those railroad tracks, instead of going like this, they kind of went like this here, because they were getting paid by the mile, not by completion time, so they built the wildest railroads you ever seen, until Grand Pacific came out, and they said, all right, we're gonna do a bonus incentive, whoever gets there first is gonna get the transportation for the cities and all. And then all of a sudden, it was straight tracks from there on out.
Wow.
Now, that's your...
Hey, after the Polar Plunge is the...
I called the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turned it over to the county manager.
In the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session, consulted with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, instructed the county staff, the county attorney, on the position to be taken on behalf of the county in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract, and reviewed the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee, and took no action.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to the close of our meeting. I need a motion to adjourn until 9:00 a.m. on March 3rd.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ballance, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentleman, lady.